Good morning. Today is Tuesday, September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty five. This is the regular meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valley.
Here.
Doug Verboen.
Here.
Rusty Robinson. Robert Thayer.
Here. All five members of the President. We're ready to conduct business today. At this time, please rise from Pastor Chad to be his companion church. On Chad. Thanks for coming.
Good morning, guys. How are you? Good. You guys bow your heads with me. I'll pray. Father, we pause in this moment just to honor your name. We know, Father, that you are omnipresent, that you're already here. But just as a sign of respect and honor, we ask you, Father, to come into the room. We ask you, Father, to help Father the Kings County. Every decision, everything that's being talked about today, I pray that you would give discernment and wisdom to the council. God, that today, as things are being presented, that things are being talked about, I pray, Father, that we remember that we have a God who wants to have a close relationship with us. So, Father, we just pause in this moment. We say, thank you, Father, for the blessings you've given us. And we pray, God, for protection. We pray, God, that you would have your hand in everything that we do here. So, we thank you. We praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Join me in the honor of the Lord, the pleasure of the week.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, a nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice.
Very good. We're going to move an item up today. We're going to go to item five E. University of California Cooperative Extension, Lionel Jimenez is going to consider adopting a resolution declaring October fifth through eleventh, two thousand and twenty five, as National Four-H Week in Kings County. Good morning.
Morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members, council, CAO's office and Clerk's office. Thank you very much. My name is Leonel Jimenez, Cooperative Extension's Director for Kings County. Today I have to you four H proclamation as four H week begins next week. I'd like to thank Casey Hill for her exceptional service here for Kings County in the four H. Also to the family, the youth, for their ongoing active participation in the program that has been very successful for many, many, many years, and it's generational. And also to the, I'd like to thank Kings County for the support over the years and continuing supporting four H. So, appreciate it. I'll hand it off to Casey.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Casey Hill, and I am the Community Outreach Specialist for Kings County four H program. Today, I'm joined by our county ambassador team and some of our members and four H volunteers. And we are here to request a proclamation recognizing National Four-H Week as October fifth through eleventh in Kings County. Uh, we are celebrating the positive impact that four H has on communities. And four H is the largest youth development organization in our nation, reaching over six million kids a year. In California, we are delivered through the University of California Cooperative Extension offices in each county. Uh, the theme of the National Four-H Week this year is Beyond Ready, and we are making a ready generation for a world of change. Currently, the Kings County four H program has six clubs throughout Kings County, um, in Hanford, Lemoore, and in Corcoran. We also have an in-school club at the University Charter School on the Lemoore College campus, and we have a military four H club on NAS Lemoore. We also do after-school programming, uh, through several schools in Kings County. Uh, through these in- increased, uh, delivery modes, we have increased participation one hundred and fifty-three percent in the past two years. I'm very proud of that. The more kids we can reach in our county, the better. In our four H program, kids age five to nineteen participate in hands-on activities. We focus on things like civic engagement, agriculture, health, and science. And compared to their peers, four H members are four times more likely to make a positive impact in their community and twice as likely to pursue a career in STEM. At this time, I would like to invite our Kings County four H ambassador team to introduce themselves. They are our premier leadership team in Kings County. And at the end of their year of service, they will receive a scholarship to go to college or a trade school in California.
Hello, my name is Shane Dooley, and I'm part of Kings, Kings Harvest four H. And my favorite part about four H is growing leadership and hanging out with friends.
Hi, my name is Alana Edmanson, and I'm a twenty-five, twenty-six Kings County Ambassador. I'm a part of the Grandville four H Club, and I've been in four H for about thirteen years. Um, I currently participate in a couple of different projects, including photography, public speaking, the Horse and Pony Project, and Sheep. And something that I really appreciate four H for is the, um, com- camaraderie, the leadership, um, activities, and, uh, being able to experience being a good sport.
Hi, my name is Juliette Champy. I've been in the Kings Harvest four H for nine years. I'm showing meat rabbits, and I'm in photography this year. And I've learned a lot of great communication skills throughout the years in four H.
Hi, my name is Ava Dooley. I'm fourteen years old and a senior at Kings Harvest four H Club. I participate in swine and photography. And my favorite things about four H is all the amazing leaders and friends I've met.
So, we got a question. So, Kings Harvest, is that King River and Hardwick?
Kings Harvest meets at the Fairground.
Okay.
Kings River four H meets at Kings Harvest, uh, Kings River Hardwick.
Okay, and Grandville Pioneer?
Yes.
And we have certificates for you today? You want to find out, are you finishing?
Yes, that's it. Thank you.
If we have a presentation for you, I'll be down here as well to do some pictures.
Thank you.
Hey, at this time, we'll go to unscheduled appearances.
Yeah. That would be great if you could do that.
So, move, Mr. Chair.
We have motion to adopt the resolution by supervisor Nevs, second by supervisor Thayer, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson. Robert Thayer.
Yes. I mean, thank you very much. Thank you, reminder. We'll go on now to unscheduled appearances. Uh, this is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board on items of interest within the board jurisdiction and which are not already on the agenda. The board will not answer questions impromptu and concern for complaints to be referred to the appropriate staff. For items which are on the agenda, members of the public will be provided with an opportunity to address the board at each time of his plot out for discussion. Speakers are limited to two minutes. No more. Thank you very much.
The first speaker is Lupe Villa. I did not receive the correspondent.
Mr. Villa.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Lupe Villa with the Elections Office. I just want to bring attention to a matter that came to my attention just recently regarding the Avenue City recall. Uh, there's a letter that's been circulating around the city of Avenue that's been stamped or altered, uh, to show as my office endorsing or opposing the recall elections, uh, the recall efforts within the city of Avenue. So, I just want to bring clarity to the citizens of Avenue and ensure them that my office does not support or endorse any type of election activities other than the ones we promote for them to do as such an elected official running for office. So, the letter is up in the projection. You will see that that letter was issued to the proponents of the recall efforts, which is a standard operating procedure for that type of request. On the bottom of that, you'll see a stamp says, do not sign recall, save sixty-seven thousand dollars, which is approximately what's going to cost to do that recall. My office did not stamp that letter. That letter's been altered. It's been going around the city of Avenue. Came to my attention. So, uh, my only option is to bring attention as fast as I can so the citizens in Avenue or the voters in Avenue know that we don't, do not endorse or oppose any type of recall efforts within the city of Avenue. And my office is responsible to conduct fair, legal, and free elections, and that's what we do. So, uh, I just want them to, to be assured that we are not going to take any position in these efforts. Uh, another thing that we'll be doing is we'll be reporting this to the enforcing authorities within state and local authorities so they can look into the matter. And another step that we're taking is we'll be sending out a letter to each registered voter within the city of Avenue so they know that we're not endorsing or opposing any type of recall effort.
Took my letter last year and did the same thing in that same font and that same red print right there on my letter and dispersed it out to residents in the city of Avenue. So, I'd like to talk about that.
Well, thanks, Super Roger, for the comments. So, it's not if we are, it matters we are going to send this over to enforcing authorities. I don't think it's fair to the citizens of Avenue to be given an ultra document pretending to be a county document. It is my letterhead, it's my staff, it's myself. I've asked to be kept away from the politics that involve a recall or any other election activity. Our office, again, is, is, I was hired to conduct fair and legal elections, and that is my job. And that's what I'll be doing.
Thank you.
You guys have a good day. Thanks.
The next speaker is Sheila Verdugo.
Verdugo. Fine.
Going to get right to it. I never get to the end. I'm here today to thank the Board of Supervisors and the C A, Ms. Martinez, for your continued diligence and commitment to working towards getting a fire contract signed. However, for reasons I cannot fully understand, I am once again standing here before you as a concerned citizen of Avenue, the city that I love, asking for clarity as to why a contract has still not been signed. Some may ask why I'm not speaking directly to my own city council. The truth is, I no longer have confidence in receiving honest and transparent answers from them. Each time I have stood before my council, the very individuals elected to be my voice for the people, I have felt dismissed and invisible. Back in May, when this volunteer fire department was, um, contract was on the agenda for a vote, our community received no notice, no public discussion, no town hall meetings. It was silence. Now, five months later, there remains a troubling lack of communication regarding the future of our fire services. When residents ask questions, we are met with vague reassurances, such as the city will not put citizens in danger, yet we also hear recordings suggesting otherwise. And we, we see public comments from leadership dismissing the concerns as misunderstanding. This is not a misunderstanding. This is a matter of life and the safety of our community. It is, it was about protecting our children, our seniors, our working families, and our migrant neighbors. I cannot predict the outcome today, but I do know that the silence of and lack of transparency have eroded trust. Our community deserves leadership that is honest, inclusive, and willing to put the people first. And so, I'm just here just making the statement and hoping that whatever happens today, um, you know, I, I, I support what happens today. But I do just want you to know that we are under a leadership that is definitely, um, lacking integrity and lacking inclusiveness, and I am very disappointed in that fact. Thank you.
Thank you for keeping it. Appreciate that.
The next speaker is the boss. I did speak to each one of them individually and asked them when they wanted to speak.
Mr. Chairman, would you consider, uh,
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if I'm going to need them. Um, good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Dalila Barajas. I reside in Avenue, and I am here to set the record straight. No one has sponsored or endorsed my recall. There are no third parties involved. The Elections Department and our District Two Board Supervisor have never endorsed or promoted any of their recall efforts. They have remained neutral, as good leaders should be. The proponents of this recall, we lead it, we publicly advocate for it, and we circulate our own petitions. And with that being said, I would like to direct now my words to our mayor, Alvaro Preciado, and to our city manager, Anthony Lopez. You know who you are. Listen closely. Despite your desperate and failed attempts to stop the recall, we are still here. I'm not backing down. Your tricks, your arrogance, every move you make only proves why this recall is necessary. No amount of smoke, no amount of mirrors, no amount of backroom politics will save you from accountability. Keep playing your games because those political games have turned you into the best campaigners for your own recall. Congratulations. I'm coming for you with this recall, and I will not stop until you are held accountable. Thank you.
And Mr. Chair.
Okay, we'll go on now to minutes. We're out of, uh, closed session from regular meeting, September twenty-third, twenty.
There was no reportable action.
Right. Thank you. Item B, approval of the minutes from regular meeting, September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. First by supervisor Nevs, second by supervisor Thayer, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Uh.
Doug Verboen.
Same.
Rusty Robinson. Robert Thayer.
Yes.
Okay, or in favor, one attention. We'll move on now to the consent calendar. We are going to poll an item. It's going to be item four D two, and we'll discuss that after we load the calendar. What's your pleasure? Move, J V, can I send someone to add a minute? Move by supervisor Nevs, second by supervisor Robinson, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Uh.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Robert Thayer.
Yes.
I'm in favor. Thank you very much. Now, we're going to go to item, uh, finance department, D two. Morning.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Rob Canusin, Assistant Finance Director with the Department of Finance. Uh, so this item is, uh, requesting approval of amendment to agreement number zero-two-three dash one oh nine with Baker Tilly, uh, formerly Moss Adams, um, to exclude the Transportation Development Act audits for the city of Avenue. Uh, our contract with Baker Tilly to conduct an annual audit of our financial statements ended this past spring. Uh, part of that contract included the TDA audits for all of the county unincorporated cities, incorporated cities, sorry. Baker Tilly was able to audit all of the cities through fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, except for the city of Avenue. Uh, in order for the firm to conduct these audits, the city's, uh, own financial statement audits must be up to date. The city of Avenue currently does not have their audits completed for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four. Therefore, their TD audits, TDA audits have not been able to be completed by the firm. Uh, Kings, the Kings County Department of Finance has recently contracted with a new audit firm, Price Page, to conduct our audits for the next three years. Uh, when preparing this RFP for this contract, uh, the Kings County Association of Governments reached out to us to request that we not include the TD, TDA audits in this request. KCAG is now preparing their own RFP for the TD audit, TDA audits, and want to include Avenue's for fiscal years twenty-three and twenty-four. Uh, we reached out to Baker Tilly to, uh, request this amendment, and they agreed it would be best for the new firm to audit these fiscal years and future ones. Um, if and when the city of Avenue files their financial reports. So, with that, I am, uh, requesting your board to approve, uh, the first amendment, first amendment with Baker Tilly to exclude the Transportation Development Act audits for the city of Avenue. Have to answer any questions.
I just had a couple, a couple of questions. So, this, this kind of popped out and, and, um, so are the other cities up to date then with their audit services for this?
They are, yeah, now. There were a few that were maybe a year behind, but now everybody's caught up at least till twenty-three, twenty-four.
So, then what? What, what does this mean? What, what are they not, what is, what is that West Side City not going to be able to participate in because of that?
Well, they're, they're, they, they're missing out. Uh, we're holding their TDA money we have for the past couple of years. Their, their LTF money.
Sniff raps.
Right, uh-huh. So, yeah, we, we've been holding their, their money for the past two years until they get compliant. We're not able to pay them.
And yeah. Looking to the future, is this something that can be rectified?
Or is it? Well, it's, it's, it's up to them to get their financial statements done and their audits complete. Um, I'm not sure where they stand on that right now.
But we're not, this, so this, this county is, we're just waiting. We're not, we're not.
Right. We're up to date. Yeah. Uh-huh. It's just that this, the cities, yeah, that are, that are behind, and they're not able to get their audits done. Right.
Mr. Chairman, may we be allowed to speak real quickly?
Robinson, uh, any questions to the audience?
Maybe allow to speak real quick.
Hi, good morning. Anthony Lopez, City Manager for City of Avenue. So, yes, I did have a conversation with Terry King about two weeks ago. She mentioned that that they were going to be going with the new auditor since whoever the old auditor used to be was also having a lot of trouble. It seems everyone's having trouble with auditors for public agencies. So, we did have issues with our former auditor, um, Sultamayor and Associates. We've now moved over to a new auditor. Uh, we signed that contract in July, uh, and I always forget the, the whole name of that auditor. We work with a gentleman named Brett. They were referred to us through Price Page and Company as well, which seems like you guys are also working with. Since we are working with them, what Terry King had requested is we were going to ask the new auditor that, um, county and, and K CAG is getting to do those audits once we have our audits completed. Um, as presented by Price Page and Company back in July and August, they anticipate having us caught up to twenty-twenty-four in December. So, we're already almost completed with twenty-twenty-three. We're actually at twenty-twenty-two. Uh, so we have submitted those. Uh, twenty-three and twenty-four will be done by December. So, those are already well underway, and that's why I told Terry King that we would have those done by the end of the year. My understanding has only been three years of LTF that have been withheld, about a million dollars.
Right, correct.
So, yes, the city is well aware, and we appreciate the county's patience on the matter. Uh, we have been working with a new auditor because we were just having a lot of trouble. Price Page and Company has been the ones helping us with our books. So, we have no issues there. Just finding an auditor who is able to kind of catch us up. So, that's where we stand, just real quickly.
Actually, thank you.
Appreciate the opportunity.
Seeing that, we have a motion.
Joe Nevs.
Yeah.
Richard Valley.
Uh.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson. Robert Thayer.
I'm in favor. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
I did forget to ask, is the audience had any questions on the consent calendar? Is that what's in the comment, the consent calendar? Before the day after that, I'm sorry. Okay, we'll move on now to regular agenda items. And we have item A, Community Development Agency, Chuck Kenny. Yes, India. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman and Supervisors. Yes, India Karuva, Planner with the Kings County Community Development Agency, here to recommend the appointment of the members for the General Plan Advisory Committee, or the G P A C. Last week, I presented a study session where the final list of applicants was provided to your board for preliminary review before today's meeting. In total, fourteen applicants, uh, fourteen applications, excuse me, were received, and I do want to clarify that supervisors were free to select anyone from the list that they deemed fit to be a member. An applicant does not have to be from a supervisor-specific district to be selected. In last week's study session, I used language that caused some confusion, so I did want to clarify that. The G P A C will be comprised of at least thirteen, but not more than twenty-one business owners, community leaders, uh, and community leaders that will advise the Planning Commission and Board on Community Priorities, help translate complex planning concepts into real-world impacts, and act as ambassadors to encourage public involvement throughout the process. Members of the G P A C will serve as a critical link between the public and county decision-makers throughout the general plan and development code update that the county is currently undergoing. G P A C members will support public outreach efforts and help foster consensus on updates to important general plan elements, including land use, circulation, air quality, and environmental hazards. It will also promote community engagement by attending events and reporting regularly to the public. As mentioned in last week's meeting, we do encourage the number of G P A C members, uh, as an odd, to stay as an odd number to ensure a clear majority during the voting process. However, if your board would like to select all fourteen applicants, I just want to note that the clear majority during the voting process would then be ten members. Um, at this time, I'd like to recommend that the board appoint the, the members of the G P A C, and I'm available for any questions you might have. And we also have our consultant from Q K, Steve Brandt, in attendance.
Thank you, Cindy. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I, uh, I vaguely remember last week is a long meeting. Um, I went, went through the list, but I didn't see a list in today's packet. And, uh, so I have two questions. One, um, did three, um, applicants from, uh, District Two, did they apply? Are they in, in this, uh, list of fourteen?
I have no applicants from District Two.
Okay. My second, okay, so my second question is going to be, um, the one that I was having personal conversations, um, with to submit.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the question is, could they, is there a conflict if they also serve on the, um, county, um, Planning Commission?
I believe, yeah, but I don't think that that person applied.
Okay.
But he, we, we reached out to him, though, and sent the application, but he never applied. So, if he wants to do Planning Commission, okay.
We, we would rather do the Planning Commission. I'll work. I still have time to work on the other three.
I'm sorry?
Do I still have time to get three folks from District Two?
Uh, I think we'd have to reopen the application. Okay, my deputy director.
Mr. Chair, Board members, Alex Hernandez, Deputy Director of Planning. So, there isn't a specific number for each district, right? The, the G P A C is made up of minimum of thirteen members, up to twenty-one members, and we only had fourteen applicant, excuse me, fourteen applicants. So, here today, your board will choose how they want to fill the G P A C. You can select from, it doesn't have to be from your district. It's who you feel is the best person for, to serve on the G P A C. This board can appoint all, all fourteen if you choose.
Okay, so is there a list for today?
It's the same list that was attached last week. That, that's, uh, why we had the study session last week, to give you those names ahead of time.
Hey, any other questions? What's the board's direction?
Uh, I'd go ahead and appoint the fourteen, leave the, uh, application process open until we reach the twenty, what was the number, Alex?
It maximum twenty-one. It doesn't have to be twenty-one. You can leave it at fourteen for the remainder of the.
I, I, I think, um, go ahead and appoint the fourteen, allow applications until we reach that threshold.
I, I'll second that, kids. I really would like to get someone from District Two, especially for the West Side, Kettleman. I mean, as it is, it is hard to get people to grant jury. I'll tell you that. We, they can't, they've tried, like, how to get someone from our district on the grand jury. Um, but, but we do need to have that representation. So, I'll make a commitment to work, work some phone calls this week.
If we have a motion and a second, uh, as amended, you came with amendment?
Yeah, I just have a question. Would you like us to come back to the board after every application that we receive from here on out or?
If we see, if we see other applicants, please bring it to the board.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And just for clarification, I could read you the names. I do have that list. Are you okay with that going forward?
I'm fine because those people, they, they met the dead on, they submitted on.
Okay. Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Uh.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Robert Thayer.
Yes.
And do we have any questions to the audience? All right.
Any volunteers?
Anyone?
I see.
You're not doing anything.
I see Ral and Mary Gomez from my district and, uh, Greg Gatska.
Okay, we got five in favor. Thank you very much. We'll look forward to any other applicants that may want to apply in the near future. Uh, and we'll move on now to item five B, County Council, and we have Mary.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This first item is consider introducing an ordinance amending sections two dash twenty-three through two dash thirty-nine of the Kings County Code of Ordinances to change from a county administrative officer to a county executive officer county management model. The county administrative officer serves as the chief executive staff member in the county government and is appointed by the Board of Supervisors. The CAO is responsible for overseeing the day-to-day operations of all county departments under the board's jurisdiction and ensuring efficient and accountable service delivery across the organization. The key responsibilities for the, um, CEO include developing and managing county's annual budget, providing policy and fiscal recommendations to the board, coordinating the preparation of agenda items, implementing board-approved initiatives, and supervising key administrative functions. The CAO also plays a lead role in intergovernmental relations, legislative advocacy, emergency response coordination, and strategic planning. This position works closely with department heads, elected officials, community partners, and outside agencies to align operations with board priorities and respond to emerging countywide needs. As part of the recent evaluation of county operations and the performance review of the county administrative officer, the Board of Supervisors directed staff to amend the county code to transition from the current CAO management model to a CEO management model. This proposal aims to enhance communication and streamline operations across various departments. It also reflects the board's ongoing efforts to explore new management strategies. Kings County adopted the CAO ordinance in nineteen ninety-three and has not been updated since. In California's fifty-eight counties, currently there are thirty-eight with a CAO model, seventeen with a CEO model, and three utilizing other models. If adopted, this ordinance amendment would formally change the title from CAO to CEO, update and clarify the position's duties, and delegate to the CEO the authority to appoint most non-elected department heads. Upon board adoption, a summary of the ordinance and the supervisors' votes will be published in the local paper and posted on the Clerk of Board's website. The ordinance would take effect thirty days after board approval, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Any question or comments from the board? The motion by Supervisor Robinson?
Same.
Second by Supervisor Nevs. Any questions from the audience? Any second thoughts from this? From period. Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson. Robert Thayer.
Yes.
Five in favor. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Uh, look forward to working with you in the upcoming years. Okay. We have the next one is Fire Department, John Chamberlain.
We, we still have a few more items under County Council.
Oh, so we do each one separate?
We do.
Oh, all right. Well, item number two.
Okay, so introduce an ordinance amending section two dash two point one of the Kings County Code of Ordinances to change the appointing authority of the Clerk of the Board from the Board of Supervisors to the county CEO. Background ordinance four-one-three adopted September nineteen eighty-nine addresses the office of the Clerk of the Board of Supervisors. The existing ordinance indicates that the Clerk of the Board is an appointive, appointive office to be filled by appointment by the Board of Supervisors. Upon recent evaluation of county operations and CAO, the board directed staff to amend ordinance four-one-three, establishing the appointive office, which is to be appointed by the county executive officer. The amendment is designed to enhance operational efficiencies and service delivery models. Upon board adoption, again, this will be published in the local paper and posted on the clerk's website. Um, it will take effect thirty days after board approval, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, the only comment I would make is, uh, um, I, I'd just like to say that the vote before and this one here, um, none of it comes, um, it, it all comes from, uh, a po, uh, a very positive and confident feeling, confidence that we have in our, um, CAO, uh, Martinez, um, as far as the Clerk of the Board. Uh, our clerk is a rock star super staffer. I never want her to leave. There's nothing negative to this. This is all about just, um, a, a new way to move forward with trust leadership. Thank you, Catherine, for all.
I appreciate that because I did write a speech at three AM this morning because I wasn't sure where we're going.
That, that, is that a motion?
I would make the motion, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion in a second. Uh, do we have any question in the audience? Madam Clerk, do you have a paragraph you want to read?
Nope. I'm gonna leave it. I'm gonna leave it for my goodbye.
All right.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson. Robert Thayer.
Yes.
That was in my brain.
Five and thank, five in favor. We thank you very much for the work you've done. It's just a new, new style we're going to go forward with and we, we know you're here to handle it. Great job. So thank you. Yeah, I'm number three.
The next item is to introduce an ordinance amending section two dash nine four of the Kings County Code of Ordinances to change the appointing authority of the Director of Finance from the Board of Supervisors to the CEO. Ordinance six-two-seven was adopted March two thousand and four, which established that the Board of Supervisors shall appoint the Director of Finance and the Department of Finance shall serve as an at-will employee to the Board of Supervisors. The proposed amendment to ordinance six-two-seven modifies the appointing authority to the county CEO as well as the at-will status. The proposed amendment would provide for appointing authority and direct oversight of the finance director by the CEO, increasing operational efficiencies and service models. Again, this will be published, um, in the appropriate places and will take effect thirty days after board approval, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any question or comment from, uh, Mary?
Just, I just, just one comment. I kind of wanted to join Supervisor Valley, just pick a couple of quick statements on this, really on all four of the items that, that, just from my seat. When I look at this and, and in discussions of trying to run an organization, a big organization with, when I was the sheriff's undersheriff, um, the complexities of day-to-day business, it would be, I, I couldn't imagine have to stop my day and report to five people to get direction on something that has to happen. And so I look on all of this. This is a great, this is a great opportunity for our, for Curia, um, to set expectations to the department heads, to inspect work product, to, uh, hold accountable. Not that our department heads need to be held accountable. We have phenomenal department heads that work for us, but there's still those pieces that need to take place in any leadership, uh, application. And then, and then really a, a, a very important one to this county, um, and, and, and especially to me is succession planning back within our departments, to be able to hire our own from within and to train up the next generation to take these seats, to take our department head seats. And, and the challenges of, of, and I'm just, I'm the newest board member up here. Um, and, and I, I have, I have not met with a single department head who reports to me and give them, hey, these are what my expectations are, and I'm going to come back into your office and inspect your work product. It just, that model just, it, it, it worked at the time when it needed it to work, but moving forward um, in this county government, and I think to, to help grow our county and to be better, this is, this is the correct model to go. And so with that, I, I motion for whatever, I think, row number three.
We have a motion, second by Supervisor Robinson. Any question in the audience? Is Eric in the audience? Rob, you think you're good with this?
Eric's in San Diego at a conference.
Oh, wait.
He's well aware of this item.
Lose, you lose, huh? All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson. Robert Thayer.
Yes.
Five in favor. Thank you very much. We're going to go to item number four.
This last item from our office is to introduce an ordinance amending section two dash four point one of the Kings County Code of Ordinances to change the appointing authority of the Surveyor slash Road Commissioner from the Board of Supervisors to the CEO. Ordinance six-eight-two adopted April two thousand and seventeen addresses the office of the County Surveyor and Road Commission. The existing ordinance consolidated the Surveyor and Road Commissioners offices, establishing that functions are to be performed by the Public Works Director. The Public Works Director is currently appointed by the Board of Supervisors. Upon recent evaluation of county operations and county administrative officer, the board directed staff to amend ordinance six-eight-two modifying appointing authority for the County Surveyor and Road Commissioner to the CEO. The amendment is designed to enhance operational efficiencies and service delivery models. Again, this will be published in the various appropriate places, and the ordinance will take effect thirty days after board approval, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any question or comments? Mr. Anderson, you're okay with that? Okay.
It's Mitchell anyway.
That's Mitchell.
He's fine, he's fine with it.
I start at the top, work my way down. You have a motion? Supervisor, approved by Supervisor, uh, Robinson, second by Supervisor Valley.
And as your first story of business, could you talk to him and ask him to fix the ten potholes on dairy and Utica?
That's the city.
Any questions from the audience? Mitchell, Jim, you guys good? All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Robert Thayer.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much for five in favor. We'll move on now to item C, Fire Department, John Chamberlain. Morning, John. How are you today?
Morning, sir. How are you this morning?
Good.
Uh, congratulations on taking that last step, by the way. I've worked under a CEO model before in a different county and it worked very efficiently. So, uh, I think you'll.
So, yeah, I got a question. Do we show up next week or you got it all by yourself?
Still has to go through second reading.
Oh. Get to the second reading. And then we asked, did we ask you for a raise and who'd ask for a raise?
You're saying there's a chance, so. Uh, greetings, Honorable Chair, Board Member, Staff, Peers, and Citizens. I'm John Chamberlain, your Kings County Fire Chief. Uh, I'd like to respectfully ask that you allow me a little latitude this morning in the presentation, uh, because the issue at hand is a little more complex than just a paragraph and a decision. Uh, the decision relates to the public safety, uh, for one of the cities in the county of Kings. It directly impacts the citizens we are charged with protecting in the community of Avenel. There's been a very vocal pushback from the community on some plans the city council has decided to pursue. Make no mistake, the Kings County Fire Department does not oppose the city starting their own fire department. I'll say that again. We have no problem with them starting their own fire department. Although my personal belief is that the entire region would benefit from a united, single-agency approach, the city believes they can provide a local level of service that's within their needs for more cost, uh, effective approach. During my presentation, I'm going to ask the Union President, Ed Ryman, to come forward and present his thoughts directly related to the contract and how some of these, uh, potential outcomes could affect his membership. I'll follow up with some additional concerns that I have related to labor pool and my management of what that may look like. After we close out the labor aspect, I want to ask Sheriff Robinson to come up and speak, uh, on his take on the situation, uh, having been through a separation with Avenel prior, and the multiple aspects of his operation still being impacted directly under that contract. After that, I'm going to kick it over to CAO Martinez, soon to be CEO Martinez, um, and see if she has anything gap related that she wants to fill in, as well as legal, if they have any opinion on anything along that agenda. And finally, I'll bring it back and like to close out the presentation with some final thoughts and a recommendation, uh, for you if you agree. And I'll keep this as brief as I possibly can. Um, as I prepared this, uh, this presentation this weekend, I really thought about what this squabble is all about. Um, for the county, it's about the ability to plan our future for the, for the fire department, the ability to have a stable workforce and ultimately turn over delivery of fire services to the city, should they still desire to do that, while maintaining a safe community. To the contrary, it seems that the city's main focus primarily budget-based. The city passed Measure A on November eighth, twenty-twenty-two. The one percent sales tax was presented as such, quote, would pay for critical unfunded city programs and services such as police, fire, street, and sidewalk repair, senior and youth recreation, animal control, and other essential city services. Now, in the city's defense, nowhere does it say who will provide these services for fire, nor does it say how much would be dedicated to those services. This also has created the situation we are, appear to be in now. It appears that the city, when approached about paying more for a proportionate share of the bill to serve their community, had other ideas in mind for that Measure A funding. It's not for me to dictate or speculate the agenda of the city council of Avenel. What I do know is the various contract proposals, the county continued to step up and offer the ad valorem tax collection via the fire fund back to the city in the form of fire service delivery. This amounts to roughly four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, for about twenty-nine percent of the total cost of one point six million. The city is clearly the winner in this situation, as accounting mission used by Station Twelve is not equitable in nature. Three things need to be acknowledged that occurred during the negotiations. It was, and this was the absorption of over a hundred and forty thousand dollars in overhead administrative fees. We scrubbed that right off the top of the contract. That's not even built into this. So we're eating that. Um, we also have, and that includes inter, uh, internal service fees. These are fees that help pay for services such as payroll, IT, human resources, portion of my salary, the fire marshal, and a lot more than that. Also, there were two inflationary values that were built into costing. The first was a flat and locked in two and a half percent annually for personnel costs. And the second was a five percent service and supply, uh, increase. The city manager has indicated in multiple public outreach meetings that we built in a five percent across-the-board cost. That's simply not true. Now I'm going to pivot a little bit. Prior to my arrival in June of this year, I had been in contact with, uh, CEO Martinez, a subject matter expert, related to the fire contract and my thoughts on the proposal. Curia had told me that we were out of contract by almost a full year at that point, but we should have things buttoned up shortly. At that point in time, the proposal on the table was basically a month-to-month agreement with the city requesting a three-month termination clause. The county had suggested a six-month at that point. Knowing the size and complexity of exiting a contract that encompasses roughly ten percent of your labor force, I suggested a one-year exit clause, preferably on the fiscal year, to make it a clean process financially and for future planning purposes and repurposing the personnel. This was vetted, met very negatively by the city. A lot of pushback was given to me. I wasn't here long enough to understand the implications of those pushbacks, as shortly after the city proposed the first of a slew of alternatives to utilizing Kings County Fire Department. One of the first meetings I attended as your fire chief was a virtual meeting focused on a quote-unquote volunteer department. This caused such a calamity that it was quickly abandoned. And the city then formulated an extremely undervalued costing to run a professional fire department with a non-traditional schedule that even the city manager admitted would fail, ultimately driving the costs higher. Although I've not actually seen the final number from the city, based on my thirty-plus years of professional fire department experience, there's no way the city can run this for less than the one point one annually that they are currently signed or that they have, that the proposal's out on. After the negotiation process concluded, the city of Avenel Council approved a four-year agreement with a six-month termination clause. Your body, the county Board of Supervisors, opted to make changes to the agreement, make it a one-year termination notice, and in addition, included a six-to-nine-month pre-notification process. And that was passed back to the city of Avenel for consideration on August twelfth. To this date, the city has, has had two separate city council meetings, has failed to take action on what you sent back, or even at least agendized the item. Instead, denying that they had time to address it, then sending a series of email counter-proposals outlining quote-unquote "good faith efforts" and alternative solutions. Also, when reviewing the agenda for this evening, for their special session that starts at four PM, I noticed under new business, quote, new business, A, consider contracting with outside public and private agency for fire protection services, discussion and action item. Nowhere in there, again, does it take up what you pushed back as an amended agreement, which is on the floor currently as an available option. The one thing I do not see on this is addressing the offer related, uh, on the table to the county's last amendment. This will be the third meeting they failed to sign off on the offer or even address it. I will also state for the record that I did in fact turn back over the uncashed checks for the retroactive portion of last year, as well as the funding to carry us through mid-fiscal year we're currently in. The reason I did this was simply that I had no signed agreement, no mechanism to cash the checks, a total close to a half a million dollars, or expand, expend the funds that are outside my authority to do so. I don't have a signed agreement. The city council was told this specifically and is now choosing to spin the narrative and give it, say that I gave the checks back, actually, the Supervisor Valley gave the checks back, which is inaccurate. I handed the checks back and actually that we're intent on canceling the contract. To the best of my knowledge, the only legal option that's currently open for consideration is the amended option proposed by the Board of Supervisors that was sent back to the city council of Avenel on August twelfth. This is the foundation for this presentation. If I may, at this time, I'm going to call up Fire Captain, uh, and Union President Ed Ryman for his comments related to contract services and his thoughts, and then I'll bring it back momentarily.
Morning. Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Ed Ryman, President, Kings County Firefighters Association. I just had a couple of quick things to say on stance of where the association stands and all this, and as we know, we, we, the county, we are aware the county's been in contract negotiations for several months now. We have been there. We've witnessed the city council meetings. Uh, I, I, I can say is the county's been extremely patient and very flexible with multiple options on contracts. Uh, I, I, I can say is the county's been extremely patient and very flexible with multiple options on contracts. It, it, it knows to say that we've been out of contract for fourteen months. I was shocked when I heard that, but, uh, fourteen months out of contract and why? But what's the problem? But either you want a contract or you don't. We understand why this is being dragged out so long. Either you want a contract or you don't. Uh, the problem is, is spilling over into social media. And with the social media, there's several arguments based on misinformation and accusations from Avonale, Avonale City Leadership, friends, whoever. Our concern is what kind of environment is that creating for our firefighters in that city? Is this going to make our firefighters political targets for social media narratives? Or whatever maybe the case may be, they should be concentrating on their jobs and not worried about being targets for gotcha games online. Uh, recently, it's come to light that on social media, again, the mayor had made some comments on, on an open mic. Um, and I don't know the context of this, but I quote, "All they need was a trailer with a water tank and some hoses with the pump," end quote. And hearing that statement really, was really unfortunate, right? Doesn't surprise me. This kind of shows everybody what the county's been dealing with lately for the last few months. This rhetoric is not going to get anybody anywhere. I'm here to state that the Firefighters Association feel that has gone on long enough. Either we come to a conclusion on this contract or we move on. It's time. Before I'm here to state, the Kings County Firefighters Association feels and supports one hundred percent by the board of supervisors and our, and our fire chief on whatever the decision may be, whether it's a one-year, multi-year, or thirty days, and we're out. Thanks.
Thank you.
I think, Ed, for that, uh, those comments, um, and to, and to bring that back in perspective, um, related to the, to the positions, uh, for the firefighters. Obviously, that puts me in a conundrum with a lack of planning ability, right? I can't hire, I can't recruit, I can't retain. This isn't a temporary staff at Toys R Us for the seasonal position of restocking the shelves. We're talking about professional people with career positions. Um, so I'm potentially looking at layoffs or something along those lines if we can't get this addressed. Uh, forced mandatory overtime. If I have to clear that station out to hold those positions, that's now sixty twenty-four hour shifts of overtime that my personnel are forced to absorb every single month while they try and get their act together. Six-zero. That doesn't count a lick of vacation, lick of sick leave, anybody who's off on workman's comp, anything along those lines. Each of those adds additional shifts and mandatory requirements to backfill that to keep the, the department flowing and keep the public safe. Um, and, and Ed kind of touched on it a little bit, but there is a feeling, there is an aura out there that we are under scrutiny. Um, we're feeling a little slightly harassed. I've talked to the personnel that work there. Um, no, there's no substantiated anything, but there is a, an inference, there's a lot of police activity on our scenes, different things that they normally wouldn't be at, shouldn't be at, wouldn't make any sense to logically be after a police department. They should, they have other things they should be doing. But that is, has been brought to my attention. As the fire chief, I'm concerned about the employee burnout, fatigue and ability to provide services through a positive work environment. The current offer is forcing me to tell my staff that due to the city's inability to decide what services they want or the duration to which we will serve them, they're going to be forced to work unwanted overtime. The essence of holding vacancies while the city could potentially string this along for another three years is simply unacceptable as your fire chief. Imagine, if you will, being saddled with this approach, and this is directly from an email from city manager Lopez to CAO Martinez, quote, "As we spoke and I mentioned, the city is only seeking and would look for a process to end the agreement if and when the city has a functioning fire department. If that doesn't happen, the city has zero intent on ending the contract." So, basically speaking, we want you to stand by and not move forward for the next two and a half years until we can figure it out. I cannot manage that. You couldn't manage that. At this time, I'd like to call up Sheriff Robinson for some comments. He has, he's shared with me about his current and future, uh, interactions and obligations with the city of Avonale. Sheriff?
Well, Sheriff, thank you for coming.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, Dave Robinson, Kings County Sheriff, and thanks, Chief. Appreciate that. The, uh, you know, the, the more to the story, when I came in as the elected sheriff in twenty-ten, the city of Avonale had already decided to start their own police department. Um, there was some discussion at the time. Do they want to stop that process now that a new sheriff was coming in? And the council at that time decided not to. They took about a year creating their new police department, which then left me with, um, you know, I believe, you know, looking back on memory, it was about eleven positions that we had to absorb back into our headquarters of those positions that were in Avonale. The chief hits it right on the head, though, that when you're going through that process, you stop your hiring because you know that you're going to have to absorb those positions, but we had a clear definitive line in the sand when the city of Avonale was going to start their own police department, and we knew that that was going to happen. And the board of supervisors and the CAO at the time made it very clear that we were not going to lay off public safety members. However, we did have to absorb positions and, you know, delete some positions, but without layoffs. And so it took us, it took us about a year to eighteen months to get through that process by which we then were, were whole again at headquarters and we were able to hire again, just for context. That's why, you know, these agreements really do need some long-term opt-out clauses and, and because you have to prepare for those things. The city has to prepare and the county has to prepare. And so just through my experience, you know, there was, there was definitely, a better communication on the part of the city at that time on what their intentions were, and I think really that's what everybody's asking. Uh, they keep putting out things on social media and putting out agenda items that make it clear they're going to their own fire department. Well, then just say it. Come before the board today and say it. Look, we're going to our own fire department. Um, regardless of, you know, recalls, et cetera, et cetera. If that's your plan and that's your goal, then just come out and say it, uh, is one of my points. Another point is the chief is here and, and we have a good relationship. Chief Alasko and I, we do communicate. And, and I'm going to give you an example of that communication, something that your board needs to know as well. We've done, uh, dispatch services and after-hours record services for the city of Avonale since that transition took place in two thousand and ten. Before I took office, your board of supervisors entered into agreement with the city of Avonale to do dispatch services and after-hours record services for a cost. At that time, it was about seventy thousand dollars per year. That's now gone up to about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. Um, recently, earlier this year, uh, Chief Alasko and I communicated and I told him, hey, we're going to take a look at this agreement because IT services are no lo, no longer part of the agreement, and we need to update the agreement. So, we sent the agreement through county council like we do. And county council came back and said, hey, the formula that you guys use is not fair to the county at all. You guys are absorbing the cost of this dispatch center, but the city of Avonale really should be paying a lot more when you base it on calls for service. And so when we looked at the calls for service, the city of Avonale has about thirty percent of the calls for service and then us about seventy percent. And I'm going to give you the numbers. So, in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, their estimated, uh, amount to pay the county this year is a hundred and fifty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars. But when you look at the new formula suggested by county council that we were going to bring to your board of supervisors, the Avonale's new share would be four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Um, a difference of an increase to the city of Avonale of three hundred and one thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars. I called, uh, Ms. Martinez and we discussed it, and I said, hey, look, if you're okay with it, I'll, I'll express to the chief that maybe we just hold off on this one more year. Let's get through fiscal year next year. You know, this fire contract is way more important to get done for the safety and service to the community out there. And if we're okay with it, let's just, let's just roll it out because the contract that was originally signed by your board was if neither party canceled the contract, then it just automatically renews every year, year over year. And of course, Ms. Martinez was like, yeah, we, we just need to not put this additional piece on the table. I, I exercised that and, and, and made that email notification to the chief. He was good with it, and so we're status quo, which keeps them at that about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year for dispatch and after-hours record services. Um, but you can see where this is going. It's another contract with the city of Avonale where, quite frankly, they don't pay their fair share. But I also know in my, in my, um, communication with the chief, that they do want to look at doing something different for dispatch services and record services and their records management system, and this buys us that time and buys them that time to do that. But it's really important to know that there is more to the story, and, and the chief made it, I thought, very apparent, is over the course of time, you know, things haven't caught up. And, and that's what happens sometimes in these contracts, and that's okay. But at some point, you got to true up the bill and you got to get to the point where you're like, okay, here's the cost of doing business now with us, and if you don't want to do business with us, that's fine. Do your own thing. But this is, this is a train wreck. This is a mess. And it has been a mess, and I can tell you that Ms. Martinez has worked her tail off on this for the last year to try to get the city to, to just come to the table and either give us a green light or a red light and tell us, are we doing this or are not we doing it? And there's a lot of rhetoric that comes out of that city. I get along well with the city manager and the council members, but let's be clear. Like, this is just constantly putting the burden on the County of Kings and the taxpayer money that the County of Kings has. And so at some point, you know, we've got a, we've got to rip off the Band-Aid and, and call it for what it is. If they're going to do their own thing, let them do their own thing. But I just wanted your board to be aware this morning that this affects more than the city of Avonale contract. It also affects the dispatch contract. Because if, if we do go down the path, whether it be by your board or by their city council or by mutual agreement that that contract is going to end, the other contract absolutely should end as well, but that's at the direction of your board. That was not a sheriff's contract with them. That was a board contract with the city, uh, back in twenty-ten that still exists today. And so I think that's really important for your board to be aware because if the contracts don't end, then next July first, and especially early in the fiscal or, or late in the fiscal year this year, that contract as written by county council really needs to be brought to your board and sent to their council for a new agreement where they actually pay the full share for the dispatch and after-hours record services as well. So, um, I brought everything. I believe Ms. Martinez has it, but if not, I can give it to you after we're all done, uh, just so you're aware. Um, I worked in the city of Avonale for almost three years and, um, it's a great place to work. They got great people out there. I had aunt and uncle that lived out there their whole lives until they passed. And, uh, it's, it's a great spot. It's a really, they have a lot of great people that care deeply about public safety. And, uh, you know, I'll just say, I, I wish them only the best in their own success. But like, let's just start being honest here and, and get to the point. Like, are you doing your own thing? If you are, then let's settle on this, this agreement on when it's going to end so the county can move forward and the fire department can move forward. We've always had an amazing relationship with fire services in, in Kings County, and I, I made it, uh, clear to Mr. Navars, who's also here today a few months ago. Me as sheriff, and I understand I'm only here for sixty more days, I'm not going to do dispatch services for the city of Avonale fire, so they have to come up with a plan. And I don't know what their plan is. I haven't heard anything back since then. Obviously, Sheriff Bradford, when he takes over, he could, he could bring something different to your board of supervisors. But if he does, I just hope that it's at full cost for, it's a fair share for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate those thoughts.
And thank you to the sheriff for that. So, that's, um, as I'm, as I'm continuing through this, please bear with me. We're almost done. Um, but at the end of the day, I felt it's very important for everybody collectively to understand the full picture and the full freight and magnitude of actually what's occurring here. Um, this point, uh, CEO Martinez, did you have any film that you wanted to address?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, no.
You did a really good at summarizing. I just want to take a moment to thank all the staff who has helped me in this, um, in these efforts, you know, um, county council specifically, you know, every time we would get a contract, I'd immediately send it over to them. They would get it back to me before the end of day. The only thing I wanted to add is that, um, yes, I did send a contract to the city manager after we had, uh, discussions in early August, which was taken to their city council and was presented, and it was signed by the city council. However, I'd just like to make it clear that those contracts are still subject to board approval, and we brought that on August twelfth. And at that time, the board made action, which you have, you know, you, you're able to do, modify it, and it was modified and it was sent back to the city. And chief did indicate it has not been agendized to present to your board, um, an additional actual contract from the city. And, um, so I am presenting today, chief's presenting an item that has already been approved by your board, so that is option two. And I just want to make it clear that, that we're bringing back an item that has already been approved by the board. Do we normally do that? No. Um, however, given the situation where we're at and the back and forth with multiple contracts, I think it's just the best way to just make sure we're all transparent in, in the, the options that we give to your board.
Very good.
And, um, on that note, um, as of the submittal of this agenda, there were four options that were under consideration. Um, if you look up on the screen, that's right out of, a cut right out of the board agenda items. Uh, option one or A would be approve the agreement with, uh, city of Avonale for fire service with a sixty-day termination clause. Um, this was developed via an email. This has not been an official offer. Um, they also offered to pay the full fiscal year, including the retroactive amount, and put that all on deposit as a quote-unquote good faith gesture. Option B, uh, is approve the agreement with the city of Avonale for fire services with an eighteen-month termination clause. Um, that is what you had the six-month and, uh, adjusted to the one-year termination clause with the six-month pre-notification. Option C would be approve the original agreement that the city of Avonale approved for the six-month termination clause that you did adjust, which became option B or two. Or option D, and this one does not give me any great pleasure, but quite frankly, withdraw county fire services from the city of Avonale effective October thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. Finally, at the request of city manager Lopez, and I'm going to read this into the record, uh, and option five that he wanted, quote, "I'd like to send one more version of the contract as has been publicly discussed by both boards of a termination clause of one year. The council has voiced support for this in a one-year clause, and I believe supervisor Valley was originally okay with a one-year as well," end quote. That is not a formal offer. Again, that is an email. There's been no agendized or formal action taken in any legal capacity. The lack of an agendized item this evening, they have a meeting at four o'clock, tells me an awful lot about the current climate. When they specifically say outsourcing fire services to either a public or private party, but they don't take up your previously passed back through legally adopted opportunity for an eighteen-month contract. And they have not for three consecutive meetings. That tells me the tone of where, where that's at currently. Um, at this point, I'm happy to provide staff with a recommendation, or I can wait till after questions if you prefer. Chair, it's up to you.
Yeah, I, I, I can use recommendation.
Okay. Uh, staff's recommendation is that the board of supervisor take a hybrid approach to the item, issuing, I, option D, the thirty-day termination notice, followed with what on, what could possibly be on the table, um, the one-year termination notice with a six-to-nine month pre-notification. That's what the board has already approved. So, I would suggest you approve item D as, with a follow-up if they, uh, feel it's in their best interest to approve the eighteen-month agreement. They can take action on that. We have three meetings in the month of October that we could address this. Um, they just have to agendize it and take action on it. Um, the reason for this recommendation is that the city can adopt a contract and immediately turn around and advise us of a six, and we're within that six-to-nine month window. They could very easily tell us, we're going to notify you June thirtieth. That's next year. That's your one-year notification. So, basically, that would carry us through fiscal year twenty-six. That would carry us through fiscal year twenty-seven. That gives them roughly eighteen months to have their act together and figure out they want to do it or not, and it allows them to, uh, opt out of the last year of the contract. That's not a problem for us at all. And the reason I'm suggesting that thirty-day motion basically is because they appear to just not be interested in taking action, candidly. Um, I'm going to close with this. We've worked diligently between the CM, the CAO, and the negotiations previously. Um, I don't really feel like that, that our options are, are out there. I exercised the end of my spending authority, which was your ad valorem money. We're to the point where I don't have the ability legally to do it. The budget you passed last meeting specifically was built on the premise that we had an agreement with them for an additional one point one million dollars, and that is not in place. I'd be remiss if I didn't address this with you because we are going to end up in a, in a very precarious position shortly. So, I'm being as flexible as I possibly can to assure the citizens of the County of Kings, but specifically the citizens of Avonale are protected to the best of my ability. And with that, I yield back to you, and if you have any questions, please let me know.
Hey, thank you, Chief. We have a special guest here today that, uh, started his career out in Kings County and has very experience in this type of situation, is Chief Charlie Norman from Clary County. Uh, I know he has a scenario he'd like to explain to us of what, what it's like to cancel out of a, pull out of a city. And so he's going to share his, uh, expertise. So, thank you, Chief, for coming over here today. I appreciate it.
Being from an outside agency, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, county council, CAO, county staff. When I started, Tom Clark was the sheriff and Ken Harp was the fire chief. So, that's been a couple of years ago. We have in, to Larry County, we have contracts, we, we have one contract city and seven. We have in Tulare County, we have contracts, we have, we have one contract city and seventeen cooperators. So when I saw this issue coming to the forefront, I thought, you know, I better double check on my contracts. And having the most um, when the county decided to um, end its relationship with Cal Fire and start its own fire department, there was a basically a sixteen month buildup time. Granted, you have twenty six stations, FRA responsibility to the federal, state responsibilities. There was an extensive amount of work to do just to get that fire department started so it could start July one of oh seven. So starting your own fire department, there are so many regulatory um, requirements within FPA trying to do this one station departments in our county, there are four or five of them. They struggle. And we help them out where they can. We do have great automatic aid, mutual aid with all our cooperators. The longest, the longer you can go on any type of termination agreement will give the city their time to build their fire department because just having some clear definitive direction. Um, you have a great fire chief, uh, there's a lot of good history and culture in the Kings County Fire Department. And I am here, you're saying, okay, what's this guy doing from the other side of the county? I'm here because I'm a cooperative. Kings County, we have a great relationship on the west side of Tulare County. We get what we need, we give what they need, and it's borderless. It's just, if John calls me and says, yeah, I need two engines, you bet, you got it. And how does that happen? It happens through relationships. Our one contract city with the City of Exeter, looking at the termination agreement with that, we have a five year contract that expires in twenty twenty six. I've already started talking with the city manager. Hey, uh, no skin in the game. If you want to form your own fire department, let us know. We need notification. I need to keep that community of ten thousand people safe regardless of what our patch says. So those are just some of my insights. Thank you. I'm trying to stay in my lane here, being from out of the county, but um, you have a great fire chief, good relationship. I remember working many days in Kettleman and Avonale. And you have a great relationship, but starting a volunteer fire department is extremely challenging in this day and age with two income families. It's great. Our volunteers in Tulare County do a tremendous job. But replacing full time paid professional staff of volunteers is very mission prohibitive. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you for taking time out today. And it just shows you, we don't do this by ourselves as a county. We we lean on the other counties. And we're going to the the state of the county for Fresno County. Uh, they come to our county, we go to Tulare. We always support each other, just like the cities in our county need to support each other too. So thank you for coming and saying.
I'm sure you called Chairman Vanderpoel, tell him that I wasn't at the meeting because obviously.
We kind of ignore that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, supervisors.
I'm sure I do have a question for uh, Chief. Well, thank, thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Mr. Uh, I'm Anna Chief for uh, for all that background and and kind of summarizing that up. Um, I will say this, I know that um, I know where your heart's at. I know what the hearts of the firefighters are at. I mean, who would, who would want to withdraw? But um, when you look at the options before us, it's everything we've already tried. And the, when you look at the definition of insanity, it says, when you're trying the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result. And options one, two, and three to me reflect the definition of insanity. Because we've been trying this over and over since May, including uh, up to last Monday, when I invited the mayor to my hometown of Corcoran. And we went in a private room, just him and I for an hour and a half. And I tried everything I can to get this done and settled uh, last Monday to take something back before our boards. And after an hour and a half, we shook hands on a gentleman's agreement that the next day he totally went opposite on and went nuclear from that day. But to get to the question, because I'm going to talk more about that later. Um, I don't call it leaked audio. I think, I don't know if you call it leaked audio. So many people have talked about the mayor's uh, closed session comments, but that wasn't leaked. That was, that was broadcasted live. Because the mayor, um, you and I were at the city council meeting last Thursday. And uh, the mayor wanted to uh, attend the meeting virtually as the city manager had reported. The mayor was in the city of Mexico or Mexico City, representing the city of Avonale at a discussion on sports. And so he wanted to attend the meeting virtually. I know Councilman Ricardo Verdugo, uh, who's president of chambers today, he felt away about it, but the board voted and they they allowed him on there. And I believe because he was out of country, uh, and probably and uh, the I, their IT guy in a situation that probably wasn't normal. His mic was left on in closed session and it was broadcasted live um, his closed session comments um, um, on the city's official uh, livestream. I didn't talk about it in our respectful closed session, but I heard it all Thursday night. A lot of people did. Uh, it's disappointing last night uh, for him uh, to be on the news and say that it was out of context. I don't know if he realizes there's the full audio. Everyone has, but I have it on my phone.
It's a pleasure.
Um, and so to get to my question, to get to my question, I had, I had, I had to start with that, Mr. Chairman, because the um, the comments that he made on 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 that audio, he talks about options, Cal Fire, other um, agencies that they could easily go to tomorrow. And don't worry about the board pulling out. We don't need them anyways. Have you spoke to any of those agencies by any chance? And do you, in your professional opinion, consider those options for the city of Avonale to take up tonight at their meeting?
To answer your first question, yes, I have spoken to those agencies. I did speak to Chief Hale when he told, uh, gave me permission to directly quote him. Uh, Cal Fire, there's not enough SRA in the area for them to put a Cal Fire presence there. Um, from the Fresno County Fire District side, they are not interested in contracting. We enjoy a very robust relationship with them where we heavily reinforce the south end of Fresno County. And they're very interested in maintaining that. I also reached out to uh, Avonale State Prison just to see if there was an opportunity there. So they're not being left high and dry if we chose option D. And uh, Chief Streeter out there specifically told me that they are not in a position either equipment or personnel wise to offer fire or EMS or rescue opportunity at this time. Um, the one I did not reach out to was Kalinga. I I don't know uh, what their circumstances are. That would be the only question.
Thank you for clearing that up. Um, would if if they, if they would be available for them, do you think that in your professional experience, your opinion that the cost would be higher or lower than what the counties offer?
I would think that it would be higher. Uh, but it would be based that they could potentially structure it uh, in a way that if they were trying to stand up their own department in a short term and do it haphazardly and do it quickly, um, they could come up with some type of temporary agreement with a chopper rate that could come into the one point one, but they would not receive the same service level.
Thanks for clearing that up. One last quick thing to clear up. I know you touched on it. But for the record, when the mayor returned from uh, Mexico last night, uh, he went to the podium at Avonale City Hall and he did an official video on their city of Avonale's uh, Facebook page. He looked in the camera and he told the community that Supervisor Valley attended the city council meeting uh, last Thursday and gave back the city's checks. That I didn't want the checks for their payment for their fire services. Uh, again, for the record, can you just state who gave back those checks?
Yes, sir. I gave back those checks.
Did I ever touch the tax?
No, sir, you didn't touch. And actually, I I prefaced it by saying specifically that since they had failed to agendize the item and take action, I had exceeded or was coming up to exceeding my spending authority. And that I, at that point, I was uh, I'm going to return the checks because they were in fact endorsed by the county. And I had no contract, no ability to collect the checks, cash the revenue or expend the funds or I did not want them in my possession. And I made that very clear.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Any other questions for the board?
I've not necessarily questioned, but I think that's, I'm not sure. I, but I think the mayor gave us a card to Catherine maybe to speak.
The chairman is aware. I do have.
Does the board have a direction?
Can we take comments first, Mr. Chairman, before we make any motion?
Yeah, we can make a motion to whatever you want to do. Okay, we'll call the first comment from the public.
David Price.
David Price. Morning, David.
Welcome. Welcome. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, good morning, Kings County Board of Supervisors. My name is David Price. Um, and although I'm not here in an official capacity, uh, my job as a registered nurse is to oversee the health, safety and wellbeing of the students and staff of Reef Sunset Unified School District, which encompasses the communities of Avonale and Kettleman City. Over the last four years, I've had the opportunity to engage with the Kings County fire personnel on many different occasions, including structural fires, medical aid calls. And they're coming to our campuses to interact with our students by reading to them or being part of a much enjoyed summer water day. During this time, I or my staff have called for medical aid probably forty times. And the firefighters have always responded to those calls, presented themselves in a professional, knowledgeable and caring manner. The thought of losing these services is why I'm here today. I want to thank the board of supervisors, county administrative officer, fire chief and our Kings County firefighters for everything that they've done in the last several months on negotiating with the city leaders of Avonale, who clearly have an irrational thought process and unreal expectations uh, based on the audio that was made public uh, during last council meeting. A trailer with a tank, a pump and a couple hoses will never replace the professional firefighters that the community has now. Again, I'm simply here to say thank you to all the county staff who have taken time away from their busy days and schedules to negotiate with these irrational city leaders. Before you vote on this matter, please remember that the community of Avonale has stood up against the city leaders and clearly loves having the Kings County Fire Department as members of uh, their community. Um, tragedy is inevitable if we lose station twelve. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Sal Flores, and I think we're going to have him by phone.
Okay.
You there?
I'm here.
Good morning, Sal.
Okay, go ahead. You guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good morning, our board chair, uh, CEO Martinez, uh, citizens of Kings County, um, Sal Flores, ex-fire chief for Kings County, um, honored to uh, talk to you guys again. Um, and uh, just wanted to reach out uh, on some of those matters and just kind of shame, shine light a little bit into uh, some of the history component of it. Uh, great presentation uh, by Chief Chamberlain and uh, Sheriff. Um, we really want to echo that component. When we started this uh, conversation just over a year ago, I had to go back and look at my uh, my studies done. Uh, we clearly identified uh, the short end of the gap between the budget, between the city and the county and uh, showed, really highlighted, showed um, the expenditure component and how it was running away from the county to provide the services. Uh, just also wanted to clarify for the record that I would never ever suggest to anybody to reduce the services and put the citizens at risk. Uh, some of those comments that have been made uh, on my behalf are are absolutely not true. Um, if anybody knows me, those who know me understands that it's not what I teach. It's not what I stand for. Um, and it's an approach that is unorthodox and it would put the safety of our community members at risk. Uh, staying in my lane, um, and our respect for Chief Chamberlain, um, I know he's got, you know, great, great intents and he's got um, great uh, future with the Kings County. I really just wanted to clarify that component of it. Um, and just uh, take an opportunity to say hi to you guys and wish you the best of luck uh, into the session. I I know City of Avonale has been in one of those uh, close to the heart to the county, especially to our firefighters. As we all know, we lost Mark. I know he he gave it all, and he gave it all for that city. And I don't think you're ever going to be able to replace that component of it. Uh, but anyways, uh, thank you for your time. Thank you for opportunities to let me speak to you guys.
Thank you, Chief. Hang on, hang on, hang on. No, no, we're going to call your name when it's time. Next speaker, Card.
He is the next speaker.
Okay. You got three minutes.
Well, this is not a public, I mean, this is an official business. So you guys talk about uh, not coming into agreement for three minutes is not going to be enough. So I respectfully ask for the time to address, to clarify. And I would like to the gentleman to call Chief Flores again because the comments, I want to clarify the comments that are made during closed sessions. We're in closed session close to an hour. Okay? So what you, you guys didn't hear the whole story and Chief Flores can attest what I said, okay? The the video, the audio that was leaked and it was about two minutes, maybe, maybe two minutes and and the community is only using nineteen seconds of it. Okay. The comment that I made to clarify was regarding, when Chief Flores was here and he was attending our city council meetings, he did tell us the price was going to increase. Big. So I asked him this question. What are the minimum requirements that the state of Qualifier California mandates to cities in order to have a fire station? And he told me that actually there's no minimum requirements. He told me and those words were the words that the community heard. He told me, is there a fire actually? You just need a a water tank, a pump and some hoses and you can go fight that that fire. Those words is his words and those were the words that the community listened to. And we're taking these very responsible, very serious. We will have a fire department professional with full equipment, with the building and everything will belong to the citizens of our community. And to be transparent, on the very first day, I was part of the negotiation team with Kieran Martinez and her whole team. And we had our own team from Avonale. Day one, I told them when the price was at that time, one point six million dollars. I told them, we're a small rural community. We cannot give them a blank check. I told them, we cannot give you an IOU and we're going to explore other options. And she's here present and there's witnesses for that because we were about ten people in that room. I told them that. So that's what we've been doing, exploring and looking at other options. Public uh, uh, safety is priority number one. We even, even this uh, board approved our city to have our own fire department. And we're going to do, take our time. It may take a year, two years, three years, may take ten years. We don't know. I told that before too. But we need a a contract that is neutral or is beneficial to the city. That's, that's, that's our intent. We be, we did.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The the microphone's been cut off, so we'll go to the next speaker.
It appears that.
Mr. Chairman, I, Mr. 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 Chairman, uh, respectfully, uh, we went to his meeting, he cut us off and he made it wait six hours. And then they put it on closed session. Or they they tabled it.
But okay, but we'll have, we'll have the opportunity um, uh, for questions later. I may have a question.
Okay, yeah, 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 no problem. So next speaker.
Uh, Carlos Saldana.
Carlos.
Is online.
Hello, hello. Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Oh, hello. Good evening. I'm a local citizen. I'm born, raised here in Avonale. Um, I'm speaking as a citizen. I'm also a local journalist out of Avonale. Um, it has come to the public's attention that the mayor recently posted a video on his personal Facebook page and the response to the community concerns in the video of the leaked audio. Um, the mayor is seen striking the table while speaking, delivering statements in a very upset tone and ending with a constant condescending laugh. This type of conduct raises serious concern for me and a lot of people in Avonale. The professionalism, the public officials are expected to address the community with composure and respect. Tone and demeanor, displaying visible frustration and dismissiveness undermines the seriousness of this issue being discussed right now. The sharing the video on a personal social media page rather than through the official city channels blurs the lines between personal and politics and city business, especially while he's still wearing a city local shirt, posting it on his per personal Facebook page. The community has a right to expect leadership that reflects integrity, transparency and accountability, not intimidation or, you know, it just, I'm sorry, just abuse of authority. The city just, we expect better and I'm just so heartbroken and I'm scared what's going on and this, I I asked the county, um, the state to step in. I I I, this, this needs to end at this point. I'm sorry, Mayor. Um, the world is watching. You can't backpedal what you have said. It's out there and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Carlos. Next speaker.
Stephanie Storm. She is online.
Miss Storm, are you online? Can you hear us? I don't see her.
I'm here. I'm sorry. I was trying to figure out how to unmute on Teams. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, good morning. You have three minutes.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Stephanie Storm. Uh, I currently work out in the city of Morro Bay and that's relevant because I came here as a sergeant from. I currently work out in the city of Morro Bay and that's relevant because I came here as a sergeant from the city of Avanale. I began my career in the city of Avanale in twenty twelve. It is a very near and dear city in my heart. It was like a second home for me. It reminded me a lot of the town I grew up in, in the Central Valley. I frequent the city of Avanale very often. For the view that go to Circle Pay, if you're in the audience, you know I'm there almost once a week. My children still stay there. I have a lot of friends there, I have a lot of family members that aren't. Blood family, but they are my family that live there. I've been watching this go on since I heard about what was happening with the fire department. Unfortunately, at that time, I wasn't able to have access to the meetings. When I left the city of Avanale, not on great terms. There were fourteen of us that worked for the police department that fled, I say fled, but left shortly thereafter. And that was under the city management of Tony Lopez or Anthony Lopez. And it had a lot to do with him and it had a lot to do with the mayor. When I left, I was blocked from the city page. I had to send an email and say, hey, this is not right, it's against my First Amendment, it's a government page, please allow me back on. That was done. We keep saying leaked audio. It wasn't leaked, it was broadcast. The fact that they didn't take the time to make sure that that wasn't gonna get out, you know, that's not the city's fault, that's not the community's fault. It, it isn't leaked, it wasn't a secret, it was broadcast for everyone to hear at no vault of our own, right? The fire chief mentions that he believes that they're not settling because it's due to budget. I think it's due to pride. They're going to spend as much on a contract that they don't even know who they're contracting yet. So you're writing a blank check, Mayor Persiato. You're writing a blank check because you don't know who you're going with, and you don't know what you're going to pay. And you keep mentioning fire hoses and pumps and water. What about the EMS component? I'm surprised that your, your police chief isn't asking about that. How many of them are EMS certified? I had my basic, my basic E M T, but I don't want to work on people and pulling them out of car accidents. You guys are right next to I five. We had accidents on thirty-three where people died while I worked there, that I stood by and watched firemen save children. Who's doing that? I saw your list of volunteers, none of them are gonna do it. And if they, I mean, they can try, they're not gonna be efficient. So we're not just talking about fighting fires and showing up at the school and doing all of these things and medical aids there. It is so much bigger than that. So I, that's all I wanted to say. I support whatever the Board of Supervisors does. Obviously, like I said, I don't live there, I don't work there. If it were my choice, I would have retired there. Unfortunately, that's not, you know, what was in store for me and many of the others that work there. But they did this to the police department and the stats speak for themselves when it comes to the crime rate and what that looks like. Five years, less than five years later, three years later. So that's all I have to say. You guys have a great day and thank you so much for hearing me.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Ed Reiman, he has a rebuttal.
Mr. Reiman? Oh, this is somebody else?
So, Mr. Chair, if you give Mr. Flores an additional three minutes, you need to give everyone else an additional three minutes.
That'd be fine.
Of discounts for certain land items in each category. This is, this would be the cost of Avanale Fire Support, close to the current cost. And allow us to fill, fill or upgrade staffing to three firefighters. On duty, increasing the safety and reduce the risk. Staffing, reduction of staffing, reduction of overtime costs by one hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eleven cents. For a flat allocation of one hundred thousand dollars even. Administrative, only the ten percent for the battalion chief and the fire marshal. For a reduction cost of by one hundred thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty cents. The updated proposal will keep the share cost of the service, services to one point five million, nine ninety-seven, four hundred and eighteen thousand, thirty-nine cents. And the difference of seven hundred and forty-eight thousand, one hundred and fi- five dollars and thirty-nine cents. He has a graph on here, but I don't think I can get up anywhere. But I could forward it to her, but I don't know if you have it already, but, yeah.
Thanks, sir. Do we have any other ones that would come up and use three more minutes? Persiado, do you want to use three more minutes?
You know, I didn't came here to argue your debate, you know, the city did sign up the contract that Kieran Martinez mentioned. That one was received by the, by the city from the county. She present scratched about eighty-five, ninety percent of what the amendments we made, he's scratching, they send it back to us. City Council voted on it five oh, that was a three-year with a six-month class. Of the ninety percent he scratched, he didn't scratch the six months. The city of Avanale has been with the contract with the Kings County Fire Department since nineteen seventy-nine. That is forty-six years. In those forty-six years, always been six months exit class for either side. So we're here. We are starting our, for transparency, we, we are starting our own fire department. We don't know how long it's gonna take, we're willing to sign a contract three, five, ten years, but we would like to have flexibility on that contract. That's what we're asking. Time to exit. If we're ready in a year to have a class, Avanale is ready to start. We're gonna have a neutral fire chief to come inspect facilities, equipment, everything. They give us green light. It's a year, two years, three years, we're ready, we start. We don't want to sign a contract that is not flexible to that option. Because let's say, like Supervisor mentioned, if a miracle happens, if we're ready in a year. Because I have faith that with, with our team, we can start actually, hopefully sooner than two years. So for any chance that a miracle happens, if we're ready to start in, in, in a year. We don't want to be tied up for another six months when we already have a department ready to start professional paid fire department. With all the equipment that we need, it will be certified fire department. So we're paying six more extra months at a cost of a hundred and ten thousand dollars per month. You know, looking at the budget and being physically, financially responsible, that's a bad contract for us. To be tied up, feel hostage for another six months. So we're not gonna start a department. Irresponsible when it's not ready, when it's fully professional staff and equipped, certified, then we will start. So I believe here the only problem is the time limit to exit. But I would like to take the opportunity to present Mr. Ruben. Valis, he can give you more details of a professional fire services. He's our consultant.
So are you, are you yielding your time? Three more minutes.
Well, first and foremost, members of board, thank you for having me here. And as Mayor Persado.
Say your name again, please.
As Mayor Persiado stated, my name is Ruben Valis, okay? Retired fire captain, thirty-four years of experience in the fire service. Okay, so they, they came to me. Avanale came to me and they asked for assistance. I had no problem. I said, I can do that, okay? And they told me, they were telling me all about what was going on and they told me, you know, hey, we're thinking about going with a volunteer fire department. I quickly said, no. I quickly told them, you cannot go with the volunteer fire department, okay? I know what it takes to be volunteer fire department. I started as a volunteer. I started as a volunteer when I started my fire career. And as many of you did, we all started, some, some of us volunteers. But nevertheless, we continued our careers, okay? So in that, I've been helping assisting Avanale. I just, actually just last week, I got officially brought on as a consultant. For the fire journey that they have taken on as an endeavor. So. I've been helping them, I've been advising them, I've been informing them. Of all the standards, regulations, regulations that Chief Chamberlain was talking about. They're not going in blindly. They're not. They know. They are being given direction, okay? And it is not just me. As Chief Chamberlain and the, I'm sorry, the sheriff, you know, they have a network, I have a network. I know many people also. Thirty-four years should say something, okay? So yes, I am doing my research. They will have fire protection, they will have extrication. They will have E M Ts, emergency medical technicians, basic, not just E M Rs, not just emergency medical responders, but E M Ts. That's what they will have, okay? I've been in this business for thirty-four years. I know what it takes for rescue, extrication, swift water, things such as that. Okay, counseling, admin, I've done my share. They will, believe me, because I, as, as, as a, a family man, know what kind of services we want for our family. I know what kind of services we want for our family. I don't want to be left in a community that. Is substandard with a fire service and or police service. So yes, I am helping them. I am doing everything that I can. I've already taken on the, the assignment. I'm, I'm working on it. I've made many, many contacts, I've communicated with many individuals. And, and I don't plan to stop. I will not stop. I will not stop to help Avanale. Okay, many years ago, okay, I didn't work for the city, I worked for the district hospital. I used to work for the Av- Avanale Ambulance District Hospital. Okay, for many years, so.
Your three minutes are up, so thank you.
It appears that.
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I have, I have a question for the gentleman here. You, you just said that. A we- a week ago, you became the consultant for the city of Avanale. But there's a lot of people in this room right now, including myself, who was at Avanale City Council meeting about. Two and a half, three months ago, where you were introduced as a consultant for the city of Avanale. And you just said that you told the council no to volunteer fire department. We sat there and we watched you give a football coach-like motivation speech to the community. Telling them why they were all wrong is being against a volunteer firefighter, uh, fire department. And you were trying to tell these folks why, why the Avanale Council was right. So again, this, we're, we're just not getting the truth here and that's what is so frustrating. I mean, for you to come here before the board and be untruthful, we heard you, sir.
Before, before you have to, you have three more minutes.
So Supervisor. So first and foremost, when I started, I was, and, and you were there, you were my witness. I started on my own dime. On my own gas and my own time. I was not an employee at all. Therefore.
So how'd you get?
I had the right.
How did you get?
I had the right.
How did you, how did you get?
I had the right.
Without being an employee.
Okay, I had the right to speak. Okay, so I spoke. It's no different than other people changing their words also. Which that same night, someone did make a comment about Mayor Persiado not using his gabblin. He actually did, because that's also on video. Okay, somebody accused him of not using it enough. He actually did, okay? And I did not say, I did not say that, and, and you are correct. I do, I told them from the very beginning, a volunteer fire department will not work. It's impossible. I did not tell them to go with the volunteer department. There, you are incorrect. I'm sorry, Mr. Ray, but you are lying there. Because I did not. I did not tell them, I did not tell them.
Madam, each, each time there's a back and forth, could you stop the timer and then when the speaker's speaking, restart it, please? Thank you.
There, you are incorrect, because I not once told them that a volunteer fire department would work. I never did.
Were you in closed session with the council?
Yes, I was.
So you were in there multiple times?
Nope, not multiple times.
Okay, one time?
One time.
One time. And in that closed session, you advised them to not move forward with their volunteer.
They, they were just questions.
You just said you advised them to.
In public session.
Well, for the record, if you were now their official consultant, they disregarded you because they sent the letter. To the county C A O back in May advising us that our county firefighters. Services were no longer needed and effective August one, they were going to an all-volunteer fire department, so. Just like the rec- just like the record show on that.
Well, you know, Supervisor Ricardo Valle. Uh, there are two certainties in life, okay? Death and taxes. As we all don't want the first certainty, okay? Taxes are there. Everything else is dynamic. Everything else is dynamic. Everything else has the ability to change. Anyone can change it, do things to be better, and if they don't work, you keep going. So, yes, things do change and they will continue to change. And I am doing my best to assist Avanale with this journey that they've taken on for their own fire department. I see no problem with them. Excuse me, I see no problem with them continuing and eventually getting their own fire department. I'm doing my best. I'm assisting them, giving them all the information that I can, making contacts, talking to whomever I have to. Okay, it's just. The one thing that I look forward most for their department is to working with Kings County. What I don't understand from Kings County is. Why do you not want Avanale to have a fire department? When you're not losing.
Have you not, have you not been listening, sir? There's nobody up here against the city of Avanale having their own fire station.
Okay, so we have, you're out, you're out of time for comments. We have another speaker, she's gonna finish her three minutes, correct? We have one more speaker? Yes, sir. Say your name.
I worked as a paramedic here in Kings County since July first of nineteen eighty-four. Many of you know me very well from my reputation as being a param- E M T, paramedic. Supervisor, Training Officer, Paramedic Evaluator, and many other job roles that I've taken on over the years. Avanale is very near and dear to me. I've, I've worked in and out of Avanale for many, many years. I've worked up in Avanale. Part-time when there was a, the district service, because they needed help. Went up there and go help out. They just didn't have enough manpower to help out during those times. And then when the hospital collapsed, I went back up there and I worked again for several years on the ambulance. And then I defined, decided after busting my butt down here in Hamford and running. You know, eight, ten, twelve, fifteen calls every twenty-four hours, I was gonna go to my vacation station, that was Avanale. Spent the last three years up in Avanale. Because the town was important to me also. And it's a busy little place and it requires a lot of effort. It is far removed from everything, so it took, you know, extra work to make things happen down there. I strongly encourage and I agree with Ruben on the part that you cannot get by, and Ruben and I worked together, we were partners at one time. You cannot get by with a voluntary ambulance, I mean, I'm sorry, fire service. I worked the volunteer service way back when I first started at Oakers and that fell apart, because you can't get enough volunteers to work. You have to have a full-time staff. You have to have everybody uptrained in full CPR and E M T. And E M T with experience. Over the years, we've had many volunteers that were great volunteers with the fire department, whenever down in Corcoran. And they were great volunteers, but they weren't E M T certified yet, and they were just in the way. Just, I'm sorry, move, I don't have time to teach you. That's, you need to go to school. And even after they were out of school, they were E M Ts and I was a training officer. They, they, fresh E M T would come to me, the company would send them to me because I was a good training officer. They weren't really ready yet to work the streets. They needed experience, they needed counsel, they needed someone to push them. To learn their skills and we would practice in the station over and over and over and over again. I used to live across the street from the high school and on the weekends, I'd take the whole ambulance crew over to the park, across the street from the high school. And then we would do drills for an hour, hour and a half, and then we'd take them across the street from my apartment and I would feed them. I wanted to make sure that everybody was the best E M T they possibly could be. But if you're gonna be hiring firefighters, there are brand-new firefighters up in Avanale and that are fresh out of school with E M T. They are not gonna be an asset to that ambulance service. I know those guys, I've worked with those guys, most of them have ten years more of experience up there. They don't have time to teach those guys how to be good E M Ts and how to do CPR properly, how to do pit stop CPR and all those kind of type of things. So I really caution Avanale to tread lightly and make sure you're doing this right, because it will collapse and fall apart. Thank you for your time.
No, thank you. Yes, sir. Chief.
I just wanted to take a quick second to clarify, reference the consultant's speech again for the third time. I'm gonna reaffirm this morning, we have zero issue with them starting their own fire department. I want to make that clear, I'll say it a fourth time. Zero issue with that. Additionally, something that has been brought up was, the city did approve an ordinance. Their total budget for this project at this point was a hundred and eleven thousand dollars for consulting services. I E, development of a fire chief and, and their. i.e., development of a fire chief and, and their standards, and five hundred thousand dollars for equipment procurement. That's kind of, so six hundred and eleven thousand dollars was the ordinance that was, that was authorized. Um, I was at with Supervisor Valley, most of the meetings, um, I actually refuted their ability to, uh, stand up the equipment aspect of it, because most of the equipment of the five pieces, I believe they uh, identified, uh, one was a new staff car, one was a serviceable type six, and everything else had, had lasted or out exceeded its, uh, NFPA recommendation and its useful shelf life. So I was at those meetings, Supervisor, and I wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. You have a new speaker, Curbs?
Uh, Carlos Saldana had his hand raised. I'm not sure if he's changed his mind.
Anybody else in the audience?
Delilah Barahas.
Okay, I'm just gonna talk like a ci- uh, as a citizen of Avanel now. Okay. Now, I don't consultant gentleman, I don't know your name. But I'm gonna tell you one thing. You lost all credibility with the citizens of Avanel when you stood up in front of them, and you said you had never worked for the city of Avanel. But then again, you slipped up, and then you said you did work for Avanel. We're already, uh, dealing with a bunch of people who are doing a bunch of misinformation in this little town. We're already de- dealing with lies. We don't need more liars. None. We don't want them. So unfortunately for you, you did lose all credibility with Avanel already. Do we want you there? No. I have plenty of people out here that probably raise your hand if you want him. Huh? I don't see any. On top of that, Mr. Preciado, you keep saying that this is for public safety. That that's number one, and you want a neutral co- neutral contract. You just mentioned right now that it could take one year, five years, ten years, up to the ten-year mark. So why not sign a contract and make it so much easier on you? And I have so many people against you right now to sign a contract. It doesn't matter if it's for one year, two years, five years. Sign the contract, get people their peace of mind, and then start working on your fire department, which I'm gonna mention it again, like we've been mentioning over and over again. Nobody's against you forming your own fire department. Form your fire department. But do it responsibly, not recklessly, do it right. And not only that, start proving that you can form that fire department, because up to now, we haven't seen nothing. We've heard that you maybe bought a truck. We don't know. We haven't seen it parked out there. Do it responsibly. That's all the citizens of Avanel want. Nobody's against you. Sign the contract.
Thank you. Carlos Saldana, he's had his hand up, hand down, hand up, hand down right now, hand up. Carlos, do you have something you want to say?
Yes, hello, I'm sorry, yes. I was just gonna, um, kind of like, uh, piggyback off what Delilah said. I'm sorry, I'm speaking as a citizen as well. Um, it's just unfortunate to see Ruben, I don't know his last name, um, I really don't know who he is. He, I seen him speak at the last, you know, council meeting. I just find it very disrespectful for him to try to speak on the behalf of the Avanel citizens, especially those who grew up, lived here for many years. Um, this, is this the type of, you know, ordeal that we're going to be dealing with, with the mayor? Bringing in his buddies, um, outsourcing people to speak on the behalf of the ci- you know, the town? I just find it very disrespectful, and I, again, I just wanted to share that, and, uh, uh, please sign the contract, uh, mayor, do the right thing, uh, give everyone the peace of mind. I, this has just been a headache for how long, uh, since May? Um, people are sick of it. Um, I'm nauseous to, my stomach hurts, my head hurts. Um, I'm about to throw up, and I'm just disappointed in you. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. Do you have any other speakers?
That's all.
Anybody in the audience? Saying none, we'll go, yes, sir. He already had your six minutes. So, uh, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, um, I know that, uh, um, the city manager, Anthony Lopez, is here, and he did offer that. If we had any questions of him, he'd be willing to come to the podium today, and I do have a couple of questions for him. If I may invite him.
He didn't sign a card.
Uh, he, he, he offered and-
No, you're fine.
No, no, no word.
No, you're good. You're good.
You're good, sir.
Your letters are yours.
Hey, uh, good, good morning, Mr. Lopez, um, and I, and I'm not gonna start anything with you. We're gonna, we're gonna be gentlemen. I'm gonna give you some credit on a couple of things right now. And we'll be gentlemen, um, as long as you remain one as well, and, and-
Of course. You stayed there when I heard it.
I got frustrated earlier just hearing the lies and seeing the lies on the videos last night. But I will give you credit for this, and I shared that, uh, with the community that last Monday, a week ago yesterday, you did come to the city of Corcoran with, uh, Mayor Preciado, Preciado at my invite, so we could try to talk this out and avoid even what's going on here today with that thing, and you took the time. You did come. And, and I was not trying to disrespect you when I, um, said I just wanted to meet with the mayor. You, you took the time to come to Corcoran, but I wanted to have an elected elected conversation with, with the mayor, and thanks for, uh, allowing that as well. Here, here's my question, though, um, as a city manager of Avanel, would you say that you are well-informed on what it takes to open this fire station, including timelines of, um, how soon you could open it up? Uh, would you say that you're, um, have been in the discussions enough to give recommend- recommendations, give recommendations as it relates to opening a fire station? And the timeline to do that to your city council?
Yes, I believe I have. This has been an ongoing discussion since we've talked about the agreement since last August. We've talked to numerous other fire chiefs, retired fire chiefs, people currently in the profession, and also done a lot of research. We have a lot of good consultants, you know, one of them as well, who've also been consulting and helping us along the way. So we have been discussing and talking to a lot of people. And in terms of timelines and such, as the mayor stated, this is the reason why we, the council, just last week, had the second read, waived the second reading of the fire ordinance to move towards having a fire department. These are conversations I've had with all of you, in a sense, specifically with C A O or C E O Martinez, regarding that the city is working towards having its own fire department.
Thank, thank, I'm sorry, thank you, you answered my question, and I agree with you that you are the city manager, and you have been leading the conversation as it relates to whether it was volunteer or now city professional. But I want you to know that, I asked you that because as you sat outside the door of where me and the mayor were meeting last Monday, he started off the meeting by saying to disregard anything that you posted on the city's webpage, that you are just a city manager, and you have no clue about timelines to open a fire station, and you are not informed on what it takes to open a fire station. I almost ended the meeting, one minute into the meeting, because I can't believe that he wanted to open up that way, because you did, to your credit, about two weeks ago, and it's the reason why I invited you guys to Corcoran. You did a post on, on the city's Facebook page where you were, I took it as you being very transparent and very truthful to the county and to the people that you represent in Avanel. Where along the lines you said, hey, there's going to be no immediate activation of a Avanel city fire station. The city's committed to taking their time to do it right. Um, you've also publicly thanked the board for the years of us giving you what amounts to about a fifty percent discount on our fire bill. You, you acknowledged to city councils publicly, um, and, and online, and I want to thank you for that, because again, it was disappointing, uh, to know that the board has always given you the discounted rate, because you guys needed help fiscally. And the other cities that have contracts around the county of Kings shouldered by paying their full rate while you guys didn't. It was disappointing on the news last night to see the mayor get on there and go back to the old line and saying that when we sent you a fire contract for, from four hundred and sixty thousand a year to over a million, that that was a surprise. Everybody knew that was coming. It was delayed for years. But I do want to thank you for being upfront about that. Here's my, here's my second, uh, uh, my second thing I wanted to ask you here.
Was there a question in that? Sorry, just want to make sure I don't miss anything.
I was, I was just informing, I was clarifying, uh, and trying to find out who was being truthful with you saying that you're leading and, and, and you're more you are very informed to lead the council on the discussion of what it takes to open a fire station, the timeline, and-
With assistance, but yes.
The mayor, the mayor told me, uh, just a week ago, uh, Monday, that you were not.
I'll con- oh, I'll imagine that what he was probably referring to, since it is brought up consistently, is the letter regarding the August first exit. I know that's something that's already been, I've already said and pulled that back, and so that that's not happening. Sent that letter to the C A O. Believe that's probably what he was referring to, but since I was not in that meeting, I can't speak much more to that.
No, thank you. That's, that's fair. Uh, the last thing, and then, um, the last thing is, so all these options here, where I talked about the definition of Sandy is trying to do the same thing over and over again, expecting different results. We have sacked contracts to you guys. We've had discussions. The fire chief two weeks ago was at your council meeting that went on till one thirty in the morning. I'm sitting there watching the live stream at one thirty in the morning, and this man is at the podium working with you guys. And then here, here we are today. So my point is, how is the board with as much misinformation and, and what I will label just straight out lies? What, what would you offer to the board today that if the board were to, once again, send you a contract that you would not delay, delay, delay before you agenda- agendize before the, uh, your city council? And what could you say that, um, as, as, as to the past, where the council finally gets it? And then they make a change, and then it's got to come back to us, and that's been going on since May. How, how could we even have any integrity in the process or any belief in sending you something? And I ask you that because yesterday, you sent a number of options asking for a contract. Last week, you guys didn't want no contract. Last week, I, when, coming out of the meeting, coming out of the meeting with the mayor last Monday, and we shook, and we hand shook, and he asked me to go, uh, to the board. When I called him up on Tuesday, and I said, Mr. Mayor, what, would it be good news to you if the board offered you a one-year termination clause? You didn't want the eighteen month. You wanted the one year. Would that be good news? He calls you up. He calls me back five minutes later and very arrogantly says, I no longer want a one-month termination clause. I now want a six-month. So those are games that have been played, and that's why publicly, I will say, if the board voted, I'm not gonna make the motion, but if the board voted today with option four to pull out Kings County firefighters from the city of Avanel effective October thirty-one, I would stand with them. Not because that's what I want to see, but because you guys, in my opinion, has given us no choice. So what, what could you say to ensure the board if they worked with you today?
Right, so it was a question about what, about the contracts?
Yes, sir.
So, and I have a folder on my computer with all the different versions that have been sent. Originally, the conversations I've had with C A O, C E O Martinez was a thirty-day. I was told that, you know, exit wasn't such a big issue. I know Chief Chamberlain, um, I mean, he recently came in, said that he needed a year. Um, then now the option of, you know, option D about exiting in thirty days. Um, to go back on one thing regarding why there's been so much back and forth, I will have to say that unfortunately, you know, the one consistent, and I'll give credit to C A O Martinez, you know, we've been the ones dialoguing quite a bit. While in this whole transition of the past year, there's been three fire chiefs, Chief Flores, Chief Navarez, and then Chief Chamberlain. So having that conversation of what that transition would look like has been difficult to even pin down. We've always been interested, and I've asked from the beginning, how can we do a transition? Let's discuss a transition. I believe at the beginning, there was a discussion about even maybe doing a joint statement about how we could transition this, there was. And then the board did not want to do that, and that's fine. But there was a discussion, hey, how do we transition this? And I believe, and that's nobody's fault, obviously, the counties had to wait to have, you know, steady leadership in its fire department. Regarding back to the contracts, there's been thirty days, sixty days, six months, eighteen months. I've seen all these versions from the county. So likewise, we've sent back and forth a lot of different versions. The original issue was the cost. We came to terms on the cost. Then we came to an issue about the terms, and that's where we still stand today. As I understand the conversation that was had last week between you and the mayor is that the idea and the hope, and he reiterated it today, is that we'd like to be able to offer payment for the year, pay it regardless, that's the option A, and once, and work towards that transition of how that transition can look like. And then give it sixty days, three months, six months, whatever that transition does need to look like. But having in writing that there will be some sort of transition. I believe the council would be comfortable if there's something in writing regarding there will be a transition. There has to be some sort of transition. And that's the conversations we have not had, either with the chief or with yourselves. I know speaking is one last thing. One thing that has been told to me is that the county does not want to be there if we're not asking to be there as fire. And that's what we've asked. Okay, how do we work towards that transition? That's the conversation we haven't had.
You say, thank you, Mr. Lopez, when you say, uh, transition clause, are you talking about, um, because those terms were never used in our one and a half hour meeting. What we did talk about was that the mayor wanted, um, um, uh, a clause that would allow you guys, that would allow the board to waive any remaining termination term. Where the contract that you have and has had for the last three weeks and have not agendized, what the board voted on here on this dies is a three-year contract with an eighteen-month time built in, uh, to go towards termination. The mayor wanted, uh, um, language added in the contract that simply said to the effect that if you guys were, um, able to open your fire station in one year, twelve months, and that there was six months left on the, um, termination period, if the board would, um, find a way to vote procedurally and waive the six months. That's, that's the main thing of, of ours, uh, meaning. So is that what you're referring?
Okay, I'm gonna interject here a little bit right now. He's out of time. Uh, you're bringing up items that I have never, we have never talked about in closed session with, with negotiations, which is why we're here today. This is not the time or place. Uh, we're out of questions from the audience, and I'm gonna bring it back to the board for direction. It's a board's pleasure.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Lopez.
I have a question for the fire chief.
Sir.
Morning. Again.
Excuse me, I just- beef jerky in my mouth. Um, you know the Heimlich? I have a little bit of levity in this.
But we, we can handle that. I got somebody. I got a guy.
If this board decided to go with option D, as in David and, and exited services effective October thirty-first, what does that mean? Does that, does that actually mean that everything that's in that station on Skyline Boulevard disappears and goes someplace else, including all the personnel? Wha- what does that look like?
Effectively, yes. We would remove everything from the station, close the station down, and remove the resources and the personnel, scatter them to other vacancies I have that I've been holding. Um, I still would have an overage of personnel, hence the reason that I'm, that this is such an important battle for money.
Then a second question. Now that I swallowed my beef jerky, and maybe this is more for council. But I know, Chief, earlier you said that if, if, if the county did option B, it sounded like there was a safety net kind of involved there that, that, I don't know what the city has today meeting, or I don't know if fire is even on there. But, but I know that there's still council meetings in the future, but specifically to that, if this board went with option D, it sounded like there was a safety net that then if the city of Avanel approved whatever contract, um, that we could then defer to that contract, is that-
So I believe that's the hybrid option that the fire chief brought up as an, as an additional option when he made his recommendation.
Okay, that's the one that you read into-
Correct. I, I was affirming that you, uh, that you, um, put a little emphasis on this by doing a thirty-day, uh, exit strategy. You currently have an option that's been approved by you, which is the six-month pre-notification, six and nine-month pre-notification, and a one-year exit termination strategy. Um, like I said, basically walking it through again. If they agendized it and approved it, they could literally- If they agendized it and approved it, they could literally turn around the next day and send us that notice. The effective June thirtieth of next year, we are serving you our one year notice. Basically that would lock them in for the end of this fiscal year. We would have next fiscal year and we could walk away from it and basically eliminate year four. It actually is a four year term, one's retroactive. So it would eliminate year three moving forward of that. And that should give them ample time and anytime during that one year notification, they've told us, hey, look, we're not going to be able to do it. We could back away from that, but I would emphasize that. In one of the emails specifically, the city manager said, we may not ever establish our own department. And we're looking for that opportunity. So it, we may go through the entire contract. That's my dilemma is I'm trying to manage that. That's my biggest problem with this whole thing.
And I, I, I feel your pain that this isn't, this is. That it's, it's hard roads to navigate to, 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 with, with the transition. I know we did, I worked for the sheriff's office and we, we transitioned police department into there. There's few members in the audience that transitioned from the city of Avonale and came and started working out of our headquarters building. And so it, it, it can be done, but I understand that that, that's, that's, that's very challenging and it's quite frankly. Um, I mean, it's processes and, and painstaking that has to take place if that were to occur, but it's also. Um, the, the short term effect of it. Um, being immediate is it's, it's really unfair on our employees. And other employees back within the county that, that, um, depend upon. Uh, this board for payroll and other type of things when we're. When we're kind of blind on a path forward. Um, and that's, that's, I just had those fair.
Thank you for reaffirming and understanding that. I appreciate that.
Um, that's true.
Yeah, sure.
I'll, I'll be short and I'll get out of the way and whether to be fair, that those are questions there, but here's my comment as a district two representative. And the seventeen year representative of Avonale, my, my record shows. And that if anybody were trying to withdraw. If this was done right by the Avonale City Council from day one, if anyone even. Talked about withdrawing Kings County firefighters from a community that I represent, I would go to war. I would go to war with my community and that, that record shows. The fact that they didn't do this right. And the fact that they caused so much frustration to our staff and to this board and taking up so much time. That I would vote with the board on option four, because I believe that it's.
Motion?
I, I'll, I'll shut up with this. I, 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 I will. I would stand, I would stand, I would stand with you guys to pull out. Because I believe a lot of the community wants that because they want this council to be. Start getting very serious. And I wouldn't want to see October thirty first come November one first come. Uh, without Kings County firefighters in Avonale. I believe on that day. They, they will be there and they will continue to serve honorably. But I think that unless option four is, um, to, uh, taken up today. Then the, the council tonight at their four o'clock meeting, they could figure it out or they can call another special session tomorrow and agendize. But they have the three year contract with the eighteen month termination clause that this board has sent them. And they've had it for weeks and that's the only other way that I see out of it, but not by. Working with them today and giving them a contract that they have proven they would delay, delay, delay. And I guarantee we'll be back here having the same discussion in two months and, and. Out of respect for my district, I, I, in my heart, I can't be the one to make that most to pull out, but I would, I would be voting yes on it.
Okay. Any other discussions? Lot of discussion today.
Anyone want to make a motion?
Well, just, I guess maybe one more question for council then if, um. If, uh. If we went item D to, to pull out. Is that, that? Done forevermore or then?
Are you doing item D with the hy- the hybrid approach the fire chief is suggesting or just item D? So council can always, or the board can always come back if the council comes to them, the board can come back reconvening and reconsider.
In a way I see it is, is we've had. We have a contract on record that we signed that we all agreed to that has not been answered to. We're not getting anywhere with that. We need to go to the next step. I'm looking for a motion right now. I'll make the motion to go to item D.
Sir.
Second by supervisor Robinson, Madam Court, please call the role.
I've been asked to do this in a different order. Please bear with me. Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Robert Thayer.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Yes. Okay. So five in favor, uh, to the citizens of Avonale, um. We apologize supervisor Valley is very passionate about his community. We were here six years ago, five years ago. Uh, I voted in favor of taking care of the city of Avonale first. But it's come to our attention that you can see today. There's a lot of communication that, that's happening behind the scenes that isn't good for the community. So I would ask the city council of Avonale to come together. Do the try for the citizens. They work for the people. They don't work for themselves. So they take that time up amongst themselves and do the right thing. Uh, I probably should have done the right thing five years ago and done the same thing we did today to get them on point. Um, we want to provide a great service with good personnel and I want security with my firemen. So, thank you. Okay, five in favor. We're going on the next item, which is going to be. Human Resources currently, and thank you everybody for coming today. Sorry it took so long. It wasn't, it wasn't Valley's idea.
Thank you. Carolyn Lees, we have you on the record now as consider adopting resolution proclaiming the month of October twenty twenty five, a national retirement security month. Wait a few minutes.
Hey, Carolyn, it's all yours. We're good now.
Hey, good morning, chairman, members of the board, um, Carolyn Lees, uh, director of human resources. Um, I'm very excited about this agenda item today. Um, we had a recent meeting with the Mission Square. Um, for our deferred comp, um, committee and we've been seeing, seeing some really good results, um, with our efforts that we've been doing for the deferred comp program. Seeing a lot of, um, new, um, people coming into the program. Um, so we saw this opportunity for the national, um, retirement security month as a way to try and, um, help provide October as some more, um. Uh, ways of us to really get outreach to our employees. Um, we've been doing a lot more with the new orientation. Uh, going in and really making sure that our new hires understand what benefits they have as far as retirement's concerned. So we are here today to request the board adopt a resolution proclaiming the month of October twenty twenty five. As national retirement security month in alignment with the U S senate and the National Association. Of Government Contribution Administrators, which is N A G D A. And officially recognizing October twenty twenty five as national retirement security month. National retire, retirement security month observed each October is a national initiative aimed to raising public awareness about the importance of saving for retirement. And the need for long-term financial planning. It provides an opportunity for public agencies, employers, retirement plan providers. And community organizations to engage employees and the broader public in activities that promote retirement preparedness. It emphasizes the value of early and consistent saving, understanding investment options and taking full advantage of employer sponsor, um, sponsored retirement plans. This initiative supports financial literacy efforts by encouraging individuals to evaluate the retirement goals. And take meaningful steps towards securing their financial future. This is a great opportunity for the county to highlight available retirement planning tools and resources to county employees. I would like to introduce Nellie Hernandez, human resources analyst, who will talk more about the educational workshop and information that will be provided during the month of October.
Thank you. Nellie, it's all yours.
Morning, chairman and members of the board. As part of our efforts to support the resolution recognizing October twenty twenty five as national retirement security month. Human Resource developed an internal training in our NeoGo learn platform titled National Retirement Security Month. This training includes a series of short accessible videos designed to help employees explore financial tools, tips. And services that can guide them towards a more secure retirement. To ensure this training is easily accessible, it will be assigned to all employees on October first, twenty twenty five. Completion of this training is not mandatory and it will be removed from all employees dashboards effective November third, twenty twenty five. To encourage participation, we're also holding a raffle for employees who complete the training. Five winners will receive a ten dollar gift, a ten dollar target gift card. Our goal is to make retirement planning more approachable and to give our employees a clear starting point for building long-term financial wellness. The resolution has been reviewed and approved by county council and there is no fiscal impact.
Very good. What's the board's pleasure?
Move it, Chair.
Move by supervisor Nevs, some of us about there. Any questions to the audience? Any retiring people want to speak?
Absolutely.
Soon to be retired. What did you say? Twenty-five days?
That's like sixty, fifty-six, forty-two, somewhere near, I don't know. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dave Robinson, Kings County Sheriff. I appreciate this coming forward because, uh, it's something that we've kind of talked about before and I absolutely support this, this recognition. Um, I want to point one thing out for your board as I, as I leave you and probably never or rarely come back and speak before you again, because you've had to listen to me for fifteen years. Um. I have employees and we're going to recognize one coming up. Thirty-five years of service cannot retire because of how much health insurance costs in retirement. Please, 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 please put this on your radar. Of course, as I prepare for retirement. I'm asking questions like how much I've got to pay? What's my sick time rollover? All those questions, right? Um, in retirement, our employees can stay on our program. This is as of like three weeks ago. Employee only seven hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety-one cents a month. Employee plus one, one thousand three hundred and five dollars, twenty-eight cents a month. Family, one thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and two cents per month. I don't need it. I'm not bringing this up to you for me. We have employees and I'm going to recognize one in a couple of weeks. Thirty-five years cannot retire because of she and her husband, or she and her husband and one or two kids need to stay on. More than half of her retirement goes towards paying, sorry, paying for to stay on our health insurance. Please keep that on your radar. I don't need it. You paid me a lot of money. We have employees around here that make barely more than minimum wage that have been here for twenty and thirty years. And some make decent money above minimum wage, but that's a lot of money to pay in retirement for health insurance to stay on our plan. And it's a small gap because you can't retire too early. You gotta be like fifty-seven now. And you can collect Medicare at sixty-five. So there's a small gap there that your board can absolutely do something about. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from the public?
If I may, can I respond to something about that? Um, so, um, one of the things, um, I have been hearing the sheriff loud and clear, um, since I've been the H R director. And one of the things we've been focusing on is getting into the new orientation. Especially now that we have the gap between the classic and the pepper. I mean, we're lucky to be some of those classic people, right? Um, but I, one of the questions I ask everybody when they come into the new orientation is, um, how many of us want to work till we're sixty-five or seventy-two? I don't get a really big raise of hands, Sheriff, I'm going to tell you that. Um, and so what I explained to him is I explained to him that we have the CalPERS defined benefit. But what's so great about Kings County is we also have this Mission Square Deferred Comp Program. And I explained the difference between them where this one's voluntary. Um, some of the things we looked at when we were looking at the retirement systems for the health insurance is it doesn't give us an option. When you meet and refer and bargain on it, every single person in every bargaining group has to put in whatever that, that minimum amount. So if we say. Everybody has to do fifty, everybody has to do fifty. And that was something that the bargaining groups went, whoa, some of our people are minimum wage, we can't afford that. So what the board has been really great about in the last, um, ground of, um, negotiating. Is we put all, every single person has a match. And so we're telling people is don't leave money on the table. If you have a match, take advantage of it. And we, I have to say again, we are seeing huge numbers in, um, I think we have a thirty percent, um, increase over the last quarter by these efforts. And so I'm really hoping that by seeing this retiree health month, that when we send this education out. That it's going to encourage people to go in, log into Mission Square and do this little scavenger hunt. That'll actually get them logged in and really motivated to start saving for their future so that they don't have to stay until they're seventy-two, uh, for health insurance. So I just wanted to add that, that, that is something that we are, um, working on.
Okay, thank you. Madam Court, please call the role.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson. Robert Thayer.
Yes.
Five in favor. Thank you. We're going to present you with. One of a kind guaranteed to be a family heirloom. Sure.
They were the ones they said because.
Okay, we have one more item and that is Zell Coy from administration.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Giselle Coy, administrative analyst, Kings County Administration. Before you this morning are the revisions to the grand jury response for the report titled Kings County Policy and Procedure Manual, Special District Disbursements. A response was first presented at the September twenty-third meeting, at which the board provided direction to revise the proposed response. The grand jury's first findings stated that no policies or procedures existed for dispersing or auditing county funds to special districts. The county disagrees with this finding, a sub recipient monitoring policy was adopted on June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, which outlines roles, responsibilities. And compliance expectations for dispersing funds to sub recipients, including special districts. This policy ensures alignment with state and federal requirements and demonstrates the county's existing framework for oversight. The second finding centered around the dispersment of, of ARPA funds to the cemetery districts without formal requests or proper tracking. While the Department of Finance does not currently have the infrastructure to conduct full audits, a thorough review of ARPA expenditures was conducted. The finance director met with the special districts in April twenty twenty-four and found out that Corcoran Cemetery District lacked explicit tracking. And had missing documentation for most tested expenditures. In contrast, after requesting expenditure documentation from the Lee Moore and Hamford Cemetery Districts, it was determined that their funds were used appropriately. The third finding states that ARPA disbursements were made to the county services districts. Without any formal request or written justification by the community service districts. And no tracking or auditing has been done by Kings County to ensure funds were allocated and or utilized in compliance with the applicable agreements. The county disagrees with this finding. Kings County Administration performed procedures to confirm the amounts and arrears for each district prior to issuing a dispersment to each district. Formal requests and justifications were provided in the form of billing reports to the county. That detailed the amount and arrears per customer and per utility supplied by the utility company, companies. Serving as a basis for the dispersment of funds. The C S D's issued letters of forgiveness to each customer whose debt was covered. Indicating that a portion of their utility arrears were forgiven as a result of ARPA funds being used to cover these amounts on the county's behalf. Appropriate review and verification took place prior to the dispersment of funds and agreements were signed reflecting the agreed upon amounts. The grand jury recommended that the future disbursements to special districts be subject to formal application processes. Eligibility criteria and reporting requirements. The county agrees with this recommendation. The Department of Finance will ensure that the sub recipient monitoring policy is followed moving forward. Reinforcing consistent oversight and transparency for all transactions. There's no fiscal impact associated with this action and the final response must be submitted by October sixth, twenty twenty-five to comply with the ninety day statutory deadline. At this time, we respectfully ask your board to approve the revised response to the grand jury report titled Kings County Policy and Procedure Manual. Special District Disbursements as the board responds. I appreciate your time and I'm available for any questions you may.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say thank you to, uh, staff, um, and the board for allowing this to be brought back today. Uh, the letter looks good and I again, I want to thank the grand jury for their service too. I know their intentions are good. They're, they're looking into this and, uh, we don't want anyone misabusing, uh, ARPA funds. I would hope that they. That they dig down into those possible, um, misuse of ARPA funds by the city of Corcoran. Um, uh, district, uh, cemetery manager. Um, I believe there's a lot to be looked at there and then part of last week was just a frustration of other things too around the county. That I, I, I believe the grand jury has ability to look into, including, uh. Up to, uh, uh, just a regular citizen, not even from app, app of the city of Avonale admitting at the podium today. That they cruised into a Avonale City Council closed session meeting. Um, I do not know how that happens, but that's something the community is also asked to be looked into as well, but thank you for your service. Any other? With a motion to approve.
Motion by supervisor Valley, any, uh, go second.
Second.
Second by supervisor Robinson, any questions from the audience? Any questions from the audience? Grand jury, you're good with that? I'm taking notes. Metal clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Robert Thayer.
Yes. Five in favor. Thank you very much. And we will announce the board member comments and reports. Supervisor Nevs.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Housing Authority met uh last uh twenty on the twenty fourth to make changes to the fair market rents and payment standards. Also, the emergency housing voucher program is in danger of termination in June of twenty six, along with the housing choice vouchers facing a shortfall of funding. The September meeting of the cart was also held on the twenty fourth. The meeting updated was updated by the Kings County Emergency Services Status on projects. The board also received an amendment for the construction services management contract uh of the transit center and an update on the C and G uh fueling the compressor uh plant uh replacement. Um, and it's supposed to be done next um either the end of this week or first of next. The uh Kings County uh Association of Governments held their monthly meeting also on the twenty fourth to review and adopt the uh final regional transportation plan, review the public participation plan and sustainable community strategy strategy for uh two thousand twenty six. And a couple of very wide uh planning reviews were also discussed and approved. And we wrapped up the San Joaquin Valley Voice Trip and received and moved forward for recruitment plan on the process of replacing Terry King as the executive director. Uh, Lemoore held a senior health fair on Thursday, the twenty fifth. I was able to sneak in with my wife, uh even though she qualified, I didn't. Um, they have a neat program of chair workout, zumba classes, walking track uh for all the seniors in the community and a nice breakfast. And certainly want to thank them for that. And the mayor was there. I I I I might be getting close because I couldn't hear what she said and I was only fifteen feet away, but uh we're we're rolling. The ceremony uh Lemoore Cemetery Walk was held on the twenty seventh with a glimpse of uh areas past residents interned at the uh Lemoore Cemetery. The eighth annual Legends of uh Lemoore Cemetery uh brings the history of Lemoore alive with actors portraying uh people from that era and it turned out very, very nice. Traveled to Kalanga to uh announce the uh football game between the Falcons and the uh Eagles of the College of Siskiess. And uh it turned out very favorable. Uh Casa Dinner uh was held on uh Saturday night, the twenty seventh. Uh, well attended and support the mission of the Casa organization. The Stratford Portuguese Celebration Thank You Committee uh had a luncheon uh on the twenty eighth. Uh, wonderful event celebrating contributions and and individuals that work to keep the Portuguese traditions alive in Stratford. And then yesterday, the community breakfast was held at the uh Palace Bingo, uh the Bingo Hall. Um, and the Tulare United Way was the organization and they took home twenty five hundred dollars. And and I took home probably three thousand calories with a breakfast that I didn't eat. Everything was wonderful. Thank you very much.
Very good. Supervisor Thayer.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Spent last week um with with a couple of you here on the board too um in Clovis at our S J V Rack uh uh annual conference. It was a uh new to me to go to attend this conference. Um, but it was a great opportunity to meet with other board members and and county staff and uh vendors throughout uh the central valley in California. Um, it was a great um, it was good for me. There a lot of affirmation and confirmation on on directions that this county is going, our board's going and um from impacts with Sigma and what's going on at the state legislature, you know, that that you think you have a good grasp on it. But when you get to hear others speak about it and you can network with them and and everybody is on the same page. It just just lets you know that you're 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 following the right compass. And then um apparently it's going to be two weeks in a row. And I give shout out to Jim Henderson and uh Public Works and the Roads Department because I got a message today by a constituent that lives up in there fourth in Kansas that there's road graders out there fixing the uh fixing the that the county's right away there. And I've said it before, you know, that uh as the county through through my district line, there's, you know, about every other mile counties, Kings County is responsible for one road and Clary County is responsible for the other road. And so I'm just happy to say thank you, Jim, and and give uh kudos to your roads guys that that at least as far as I know, um, the the issues that I've brought forth to your office have all been resolved. So we lock on wood that uh um that 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 there will be no more. But anyway, thank you for for that attention. And I know that there's a there's a happy constituent down there that um can now enter into his property without having to go through a bumpy game. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Valley.
Two things, Mr. Chair. Uh, last Wednesday, uh, we were in a Kettleman City uh for a very nice town hall. It was well attended and uh the the community uh after seeing since two thousand nine on the slideshow, all the different uh votes the board has taken up to dedicate funds and send resources, Kettleman City. Uh, they expressed a big thank you multiple times uh to the Kings County Board of Supervisors and our staff. I want to relay that. Want to thank Karen Martinez for helping. I want to thank Mr. Michael Powers and um Mi- and Michelle Spear and uh uh Mr. Alex C. Walker uh for being there um the other night, helping with PowerPoint presentation and the logistics is as we went through that night. It was a very long night. Uh, we it was about three and a half hours. I think we got out of there about nine fifteen of so about three hour uh town hall. I want to thank Unidos Network who uh they helped a lot. They door to door the flyer and they provided pizza, chips, salsa, drinks. And um I credit the turnout of that town hall to them. The second thing, and I'll talk more about this next week, but on Saturday, I spent um uh about four hours um um in Fresno for the uh, it's the Honor Flight Training. Again, I'm leaving. Um, I'm going to be the guardian to a veteran um uh out of Corcoran, who's raised in Corcoran, a Vietnam veteran, uh going with a couple of hundred um Vietnam, Korea uh war veterans to Washington, D.C. on Monday, October thirteenth, returning uh Wednesday, October sixteenth. So there was a um luncheon uh for the veterans to get to meet each other, socialize, uh get some expectations after the luncheon. I had to stay for an hour and a half uh with the guardians on training and um everything um that we need to know to keep these veterans safe um on this trip to Washington, D.C. I'll give more um details on social media as well as the community is invited on Wednesday, um October sixteenth. Uh, we should be landing in uh Fresno Airport about uh six P M. And the community is asked that if they can do uh attend, line the walls and let's give these uh Vietnam veterans, especially a hero's welcome uh and return home that they did not get uh when they actually returned home from Vietnam. So more on that. Thank you.
Very good. I think we all wrote letters too, so.
Thank you to everyone who wrote the letter.
Supervisor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Wednesday, September twenty fourth, attended Housing Authority with supervisors. And later that evening through Thursday evening, uh attended the San Joaquin Valley Regional Conference with a couple of supervisors. Enjoyable presentation from past Raider quarterback Garrett Carr and Assemblyman David Tangapaw. Uh, also, uh, thanks to uh supervisor Amy Schuklian. She's a she's a comedian by trade and her comments were terrorizing uh to and we uh we got to see the second largest nine eleven memorial in the United States. And that really was a pleasure. I think it was started by David McDonald and Pelco, but then the Cook Land Company took it and ran with the ball. And uh and it and it truly is something special. I'll have to take the family back to see it. If you haven't had the chance to do so, uh, you won't regret it. Uh, Fresno did a did a great job with this presentation and uh and I'm grateful to them for that. Uh, last night, attended the Sons of Liberty meeting. They had a speaker from Turning Point USA. And the pleasure there was to to see so many of the youth, it turned out. And uh, not just that, they were enthusiastic. And uh, and it wasn't partisan. It really was uh both sides just really increasing dialogue or trying to get to that point anyway. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Very good. At this time, we'll go ahead and go to board correspondence and staff updates and reports.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For staff updates, we have none. Board correspondents, we have none. For upcoming events, Kings County Behaver Health will host its Survivor Suicide Law Support Group tomorrow, Wednesday, September first, from five thirty, seven thirty here at the Kings Building. Kings County Library will host its Movie Time at the Corcoran Branch this Thursday, October second, from three thirty to five thirty. And Kings County will host with the partnership with Economic Development Corporation, the twenty twenty five State of the County Event on October sixteenth from eleven A M. to one thirty at the Tatchy. For upcoming agenda items, for October seventh, we have um administration has two state bills, six ninety four letter of support, Chemways Quarterly Update. Ag has two items, a agreement with the state on some citrus bulk regulatory program and a service agreement with Glass Sharpshooter Treatment with Clark Pest Control. C D has one item on monthly reporting on planning commission actions. County Council has one item appointment for the fill to fill a vacancy on one of the um conservation districts and the uh second reading for the C E O ordinance. Fire has one item on hazardous uh materials team, regional partnership. Health has two items, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, study session on a delegation agreement and transfer drinking water program to the state. H R has an item regarding county service award presentation, so this will be one of many. Those start in October. Library has one item regarding the La Prino Foods Company Foundation Grant Application. Public Works has one items regarding the Kings County Bridge Preventive Maintenance Program. And probation has one item on agreement with network communication or in custody youth telephone services. And lastly, the sheriff has one item on resolution and grant agreement with the California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go to council on reporting ongoing closed session.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we're going to pull all closed session items from the agenda today.
The next regularly scheduled meeting will be held Tuesday, October seventh at nine A M. Thank you very much.